Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're ready to get started. It's Wednesday, June 30th, and this is School Board Briefing, part of our Superintendent Search. And today on our agenda, we're going to be hearing from the two search firms for our national search. Couple things. First of all, the other firm which will be doing a presentation and answering questions after Ray and Associates is in a room without access to their electronics. However, we respectfully ask that although you are welcome to, of course, video record what you see here, we respectfully ask that you do not livestream this until later. And of course, as always, this meeting is videoed by our staff. Two of our members are unable to be here right now in person, and so Mrs. Patrica, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Patrica phoning in, and Mrs. Giovinelli, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay, so we have both of our members that are not here in person, that are on the line, and at this time, I am going to turn it over to our facilitator, Mr. Scott Cashman, who will direct these proceedings. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate it. Today, we will hear two presentations from the search firm finalist for the next superintendent. Just want to take a minute and walk through the instructions and welcome the group here today. So what you're going to do is we're going to hear first from Ray and Associates. Each presenting group will have 30 minutes, up to 30 minutes, to present, and the board will have up to 30 minutes afterwards to ask questions. The board has a rubric just for guiding purposes, which has six categories, and separately, I would ask, after each presentation, Vice Chair Vaughn, if I could have a short debrief with the board, just to speak to the coordination of looking at cost and references, as was referenced in our last board meeting, and that would come after the next two presentations. We wouldn't specifically speak to the evaluation of both the presentations. That will take place on July 21st. So as we go through the presentations, you'll hear up to 30 minutes. What I'd like to share with the team from Ray and Associates is you'll hear from me when you're 10 minutes out and five minutes, just out of respect. You don't have to respond. You'll just hear me say 10 minutes, then five minutes, and then thank you. And the same when we get to the questions. I'll say 10 minutes, five minutes, and thank you. Again, continue your presentation, continue the questions. It's just to make everyone aware of the process we're going to follow. And so I also would ask that the board members would turn in their scoring rubric to me and to Attorney Dupree Bruno no later than tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. You should have an electronic version. We won't review them until July 21st, but it'll give me and Attorney Dupree Bruno a chance to take a look, make sure they're summarized. It will not be shared with anyone else, and on the 21st, those scores will just be used for dialogue purposes and guiding the conversation. At the end, the board sits in the seat to make the final decision. Before we get started, are there any questions from either our presenter or our board?
Ms. Gittens has--
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
You said it's online as well. You sent it to us--
You'll have it-- You should have it electronically.
Electronically from you or from--
It would have been from the board office.
Okay.
Ms. Roman?
It was what?
Anybody else?
It was from Ms. Roman.
Okay, is there anybody else that has questions?
Yeah.
And Ray and Associates, anybody have questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, with that, I'll start the timer, and I'll start the timer, and we'll turn the floor over to you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Ladies of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you. On behalf of our associates here and our scores of associates around the country, I'm Michael Collins. I have the distinct privilege, and I mean that with all my heart, to be president of Ray and Associates, and we are very thankful and very energetic about being selected as one of your two finalists. What we're going to try to do this afternoon is we're going to share a presentation with you, which really describes not only who we are, but how we operate and what procedures we will be facilitating for you throughout the process. We then will very briefly just put a slide on a screen so you can see the searches we've done in Florida, not necessarily an all-inclusive list, but to give you some sense of a feel for what we've been doing in Florida for a couple of decades now. And then we would then like to proceed with questions. I will tell you, we're going to do all we can not to use our full 30 minutes because we're much more interested in our conversation with you than in just one-way information. So we will move thoroughly but rapidly through the presentation. The only other points I would like to add, there are two other members of this team that will join this team if and when we're selected. One is Molly Swartzoff, who's our senior vice president, and she's in our home office in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And I will add that we are the only major firm in the country that has a full-time major office, and it is based in Cedar Rapids. And we'll also be joined by Dr. Dale Caldwell, who happens, as you might appreciate, sits on three boards. So it's a city school board, a technical school board, and a multi-district board, also has been in education for the last 35 years. Dale will join us. He's in New Jersey. So that's the team, plus I'm going to ask Karen and Steve to introduce themselves. In our proposal, it showed Minnie Frost Brown. She'll be unable to be with us, and we're delighted to have Karen, that we could prior lose from St. Louis, given her busy schedule to join us. So we are three of the five members of your team. So without further ado, if they would introduce themselves, I'll briefly introduce myself, and then we'll get right to the presentation. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone. As Mike mentioned before, my name is Karen Hall, and I am recently retired from the superintendency from St. Louis County. I am currently an assistant professor at St. Louis University for educational leadership in the doctoral program, and I also am the president and CEO of Rise Coaching and Consulting, which specializes in equity-centered leadership. So it is an honor, and thank you so much for this opportunity today.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Cochran. I have the privilege of being new to Ray and Associates. I've been with the firm for the last just under a year, but I'm not new to education. I've been committed to working with students for the last 40 years. I've been an admissions officer for Princeton University, as well as a dean at Princeton. I had the wonderfully naive notion at some point along the way that I could make more of a difference with kids by working with them at the beginning of the process rather than at the end. So I left that to teach elementary school, which is the hardest and most rewarding job there is. I was an elementary principal, a middle school principal, an assistant dean, superintendent for curriculum and instruction for more than a decade. I actively avoided becoming a superintendent because I believed it was one of those jobs that focused on buildings and budgets and sort of the dark underbelly of the school district, until I received a call to serve as the superintendent of the Princeton Public Schools. And I realize now, after serving for seven years in that role, how critically important that job is to shifting the culture of a district, providing the direction, and overcoming the obstacles that are inherent in any large, complex organization so that we can achieve the very best on behalf of our kids. So I have served for seven years as the superintendent of the Princeton Public School. I bring that experience to this work, and like my colleagues, Debbie and Mike, I am thrilled with the opportunity to talk with you today.
And very quickly, I-- My first 11 years, both my degrees were in education at the local, state, and national level. I then stumbled over creating a company, which was a special events marketing company that I had for 32 years and sold in 2016. But most importantly, I spent two terms or eight years as one of you in the suburban city school district of Columbus, Ohio, and then I spent two terms as an elected member of the State Board of Education. Ms. Patrica, I also happened to serve while I was a city school board member as a member of the Executive Committee of the Ohio School Boards Association, and congratulations on your new role. Good luck, in all seriousness. So that's enough of the summary. So what we are trying to share with you is that we have a team that, based out of the home office, that includes both previous superintendents, one current and one previous school board member. So we bring you the full-rounded team because we find this as one of the most paramount searches we'll do in all of the '21-'22 school year. So without further ado, Karen.
Mm-hmm. The lot of experience.
Yeah. So as you look at that slide on experience, in brief summary, it speaks to the fact that we've been in business for 45 years, since 1975, entering our 46th. One thing to keep in mind in our score of associates, slightly over 40% are women and/or persons of color. This is by actual searching for real talent, and it is also somewhat based on intentionality because we want to be as well-rounded as the student bodies and the school districts we represent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. Can you give us a second? We're trying to see what's up here because we're not seeing that.
All right, sure.
So we're trying to get that shared.
Hi. Mrs. Patrica, can I interrupt, please?
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes, go ahead.
We are not livestreaming this, and thus I'm unable to view anything that's being placed on the overhead in the boardroom, and I cannot fully participate.
Okay, and I guess that's a problem with calling in, which you don't-- I'm just commenting on that. There's nothing we can do about that, but it will be available, as you know, afterwards. Okay, right now, we're trying to solve--
Is there a reason why it's not being livestreamed if the other presenting company cannot use that live stream?
I didn't make that decision. So I can't give you a reason, Ms. Jordan, were you involved with that?
It was just the reason that they had discussed doing that was to make sure that no one could see that prior to-- The same reason we did the other ones.
Right, that's what I was--
Even though--
Since that's not an issue, given that the other conference is at the root where they cannot use the live stream, may I please have access to it?
We don't know that to be a fact at this moment, if they are in a secure location where they cannot see this. So, and Ms. Dupree Bruno is going to respond to that.
Adam, Chair, the presentation is being emailed to the board.
Ms. Patrica, did you hear that?
I did, but I still believe I'm not at the--
Well, it's-- You know, what can I say? It's one of those unfortunate turns of events, and we're doing the best we can. For those of you who are phoning in, you will be getting an email of the presentation, and by the way, we will be extending your time for-- While we get this settled.
Right, they've stopped at six and a half minutes. Just so you know, you're at six and a half minutes. We have not continued the clock.
Okay, and Ms. Gittens has a comment.
My comment is that today we are hearing from potential-- The firms. We are not-- This is not an action meeting. We are not voting between now and the 21st. I'm sure there will be plenty of time for all of us to review any information that you have sent to us, and so I don't see where it would be an issue to leave the process as it is at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. I agree with what you said. We apologize for the delay, but again, you will have the extra time. It's helpful for us to have it on our screen.
So are you going to--
It's gonna be honest.
--give it to us on our screen and not up there, correct? That's what we were just told.
It has been sent to the board at this point, and I think what they're trying to do is to get it on the screens as well.
Well, I don't understand that because if it's been sent to us, we can just open our email and not run into the issue of having it up--
Yeah, we--
Can we see it? Okay, well, if that's the case, then--
It is on our emails. If you open the email right now, you'll see everything that we're seeing right here.
Juice. Steve, do you have enough juice?
Yeah, I have a core of few.
If not, Steve has his laptop.
Yeah, go ahead. That's a problem. We have-- We can pull it up on--
Put it on our laptop if we can--
We can actually see what you sent. Ms. Vaughn, if you open-- Did you see it on their email?
Yeah.
You works.
We're fine. Just take your time. Whatever you need to do, we're fine.
Yeah, it's not a glitch on your end. It's just something--
Sure, we're fine.
There are a lot of moving pieces to this, and so it was just a--
Open it up.
--tiny thing that we hadn't heard of, that we hadn't thought of, rather. We're fixing it.
Experience, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, so now we have it on our individual computers, which is easier for--
You guys.
--for us to see, and I guess we're going to start the time clock again, correct?
That's right. So we'll have you at six and a half minutes.
Back to Mr. Cashman.
And we'll turn it back over to you as you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start that slide again very quickly. So we sit before you as the oldest and largest search firm in America. We are 40-- Starting our 46 years, we were founded in 1975. Of the scores of associates we have placed around the country, three of us who are here and the rest are, as I said, placed around the country, 40-plus percent of those people are women and/or persons of color. That has to do with two specific things. One, it has to do with the talent that is out there across the country, and this is representative of the makeup of that talent. We also want to be reflective of school districts, student populations, and communities. And thirdly, it is very intentional on our part so that we, in fact, can be reflective and representative regardless of where we are or where you all sit. And then the last part of that slide that I'd like to share with you is that we do enjoy access to, and have for more than two decades, access to the largest candidate pool in America. And we'll describe that particularly as we describe our recruitment process because it's a very significant asset to that process. But we also have very strong connections here in Florida, so it is not just around the country. We feel very comfortable in this part of Florida, in Florida in general, in the southeast region, and then particularly nationwide. So that's our background experientially. Karen, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mike. So the next slide for diversity, and actually for the next slide after that, our inclusion statement, truly are our cornerstones for Ray and Associates. Mike did a wonderful job of foreshadowing, really, the strong points of the search firm, and that is the sense of diversity that we have. And I always like to refer to it of like a camera, where we focus in, where we focus internally, and then focus out in terms of the recruitment process. We start within, within our own associates that we have. We ensure that we have diversity there, something that is incredibly important to me and why I am an associate for Ray and Associates, is that our voices are heard. Having that inclusive and diverse of team makes a difference as we move out in terms of the recruitment process and our network, which you will hear more about, which is also very powerful and makes us different for Ray and Associates. So moving on to the next slide, as I mentioned before, our cornerstone. This is a very strong statement that together, as Ray and Associates, we decided and discussed this. As I said before, voices are heard, input is all considered, and it is challenging times, but this is what we work from in terms as an organization and out recruiting individuals to be in schools. So as you can see, I'm not going to go through point by point, but I wanted you all to know that from this point and what we believe in and how we go out and recruit-- that from this point and what we believe in and how we go out and recruit and how we're supporting school districts, this is what our philosophy is. The next slide gets us into the process and as it was mentioned before, you were the oldest organization and also we have very strong networks and an excellent reputation that we have with supporting candidates, potential candidates and also school districts and as a result, we have on average forty to fifty applications per search, it's remarkable, but it's because of the reputation that all superintendents are familiar with it, I mean, I'm familiar, before I became a part of Ray and Associates, you know about the organization and as a superintendent, someone who's aspiring to be a superintendent, those are the things that you want to know about and want to see, you know, what is the movement, so we do have a reputation for that and people go to our site. So, the next page in, in thinking about the process is your input, which is critical and also a strong point for us here in Ray and Associates, so it is your search, but we are the consultants, so we have a well-researched and a strong process that we use with you to help with building this consensus to decide on the best fit for your community. So, as you see on this slide, individual board interviews are critical, so our associates, use myself for example, I would meet with one of you, Ms. Fisher, we would have a conversation, you could choose Zoom, which is lovely to see people face-to-face, or it could be a phone call, you all have the same questions, but I then make notes on the conversation, it's not shared with each other, it's a confidential conversation, however, it is all a part of the data that we're considering, which will come in just a moment in talking about the process, that comes up with the profile for the superintendent, so there's multiple data points that are considered with developing that profile for your potential superintendent. Then there are stakeholder groups, again, you see and you've heard about the team members that will serve you, that will support you, you will decide your groups, we can give recommendations, but each community has different stakeholder groups that you feel that really are engaged and you want to hear from and we have questions already developed, each of the stakeholder groups have the same questions, you have a person such as myself, one of the associates facilitate the conversation and then, you know, I'm jotting down scribing the answers, all of that is qualitative information, I type it up, I work with my team and we develop the themes that we see that rise to the top from each of these questions. And so that, along with the interview themes, that is something that is helping develop the profile which will be presented to you, you will determine the timeline, but we have a template, we have recommendations and together, what works for your community, we develop your timeline of hiring and, and eventually placing your new superintendent. And again, as it says here, we are going to finalize the profile, which I kind of gave some foreshadowing a little bit, but that is on our next slide, with the profile development and this is very important and something that Ray and Associates is quite confident with, oops, there we go, I didn't push hard enough, in, in developing for you because this is your touchstone in terms of what your values are and what you're looking for, for your next superintendent, so it's a quantitative and qualitative, I've shared with you most of the qualitative information from having the conversations with you and with the community, but you also have another opportunity to receive information through a survey and when you work in the survey, we can also have it in many different languages and then also, which I did not add before, when you're in the stakeholder or community groups, we can have translators there as well, whatever you need, we will provide that because we want to make it as inclusive as possible so everyone has an opportunity to give input in this process. So, when it is the survey, it is something that is research-based, we call it our thirty-three characteristics that you're looking for, for the superintendent and then also there's an opportunity for people to give comments, so this is rich data that you have available to you that we will present to you, which then the next step from that will glean from that survey along with the qualitative information to help develop the profile for your superintendent search and then also there's public forums, which will come later towards the end where the candidates, your last few candidates, two to three candidates will be available to the public, and we'll talk about that process in just a moment, but the community will be able to see how you've narrowed down your candidates and they'll be able to engage in an open forum process, okay? So, recruitment, as Mike was talking before, because of the age and the experience and the success of working with candidates, we can aggressively go after highly qualified candidates and it's interesting, as we had talked before, people who know people, superintendents, potential superintendents regularly visit our website, here we have twenty-eight thousand regularly visiting our website and that's part of the reason why, as I said before, once there is a particular opening, you have over forty people that apply because you're naturally getting people who are visiting the site, so we have a wide net that we always cast regularly and then one thing, when we talk about the relationships and being able to have these networks in recruitment, we also want to make this disclaimer that once we place someone, we don't go and try and poach them from a school district, we leave them in that space for at least five years, so that is a guarantee there that we don't, don't do that and go back to a district that we particularly place, so it is very important that we do have that promise with that. So, the candidate pool. So, it is very important and everyone values this, is that we thoroughly vet our candidate pool, so part of the process is that there is a thorough screening process that all of the candidates go through and you will see, for all of the candidates in the beginning, you will see the top ones that you will meet with us that will have the online social media background, so those are the eight to twelve, when we have found the best candidates based on the profile that you have developed, we've had conversations with these that are best fit to that profile, we do a background search from the one at the top of this slide here and then you will go through a process where we will then determine the next two to three candidates, once we presented, then we will go through, through a very well-researched and effective process of coming up with consensus that we would facilitate, that you would be able to narrow down to get to two or three, the two to three candidates will then have more of a rigorous background, it's a company that we hired and you will see all of the different pieces of that background search, so there are no surprises because no one wants to go through that, so there's different layers to the background, the highest level of background search will be your very last ones that you have narrowed down and I'm reiterating this because I really want to emphasize that this is very important, but when we bring to you initially the candidates that we feel are the best fit according to the profile, they'll have that first layer background, okay? And then next. So, this is what I was alluding to before in terms of how you select the candidates, where you go from eight to twelve and sometimes we've had like fifteen we did in one search, but eight to twelve candidates to get all the way down to your finalists, two to three, it is this wonderful matrix that is a collaborative process in order to come to consensus that is facilitated by Ray and Associates that gets you to this final two to three, so it isn't what do you think or opinion necessarily, it is a facilitated process that you would do together to get to that point. And then also in that process, you have input in the questions, so we have questions that are listed, so you don't develop them, but you have input because you want to ensure that it represents your community, so you have that flexibility to have some customized questions through this process, okay? And so, that is the process, tried to go through it quickly and also in, in a concise manner and of course, we're welcome to further questions, but now I would like to turn it over to Mike and he's going to talk about finalizing the search and beyond.
Thanks, Karen, and we're happy to follow, thank you, thanks, sorry, I didn't want it to squeal before us, thank you and obviously our question and answers, we could get much more in-depth into the, the overall search process, so now we've gone down to two to three, we've given you an opportunity and a framework if you choose to bring them to the public in very structured but, but impactful session so you can get feedback, we will not ask the community to vote because in all honesty, it's a false expectation, the fact of the matter is by law in the state of Florida and every state in the United States of America, there's only one body that votes on the selection of a superintendent and it's in every single state constitution, it's called the school board, but when you bring these finalists to the public, we have a set of forums that will, can be filled out online called impression sheets, so the public has a very direct and concise way to get to you, their impressions of each of the finalists, we will tally those for you before you make the decision and you will see them, you'll also be able to at a later date if you choose to see comments, so that's, that's finalizing the interview and the selection process, the last part is you will have a finalist interview with each of your finalists, obviously, we will then come in again with this matrix score sheet, which again is a portion of the selection, we are very strongly recommend that you don't just rely on a, on a numerical score, that it's the consensus and the conversation that you have as a body, that's just another piece of information as you make that final selection and then we will be of assistance to you to do your final contract, because we know the candidates so well and I will tell you as the, the pool shrinks and the field thins, as they say, they will talk to us continuously, so we can be helpful even in telling the candidate, you know, I know you might have had that somewhere else, but in Florida, that might not, that might not play the palace, as my father used to say, so there'll be, you know, so there'll be nuances that we can be helpful with, I will share with you, we are not attorneys, you will have your own legal counsel, Kathy, I'm assuming that might involve you, but we want to be helpful to the process and helpful in the conversation, but we're not here to serve in any form or fashion in a formal legal capacity, we're just an asset to reaching agreement, we do provide you with a two-year guarantee in the contract and that is, is that if this search doesn't work out for some reason, meaning you hire somebody and they don't stay for at least two years, short of an act of God, we can't compete with health issues and the only other thing is, is if you were to release someone and you pay them a severance, if you pay the severance, the guarantee goes away, but if the search doesn't work, we will come back and with the exception of advertisement and or travel, we will do an entire search again for nothing, this is our commitment, I will tell you that we've done and completed over sixteen hundred searches in our history, we have only been back fifteen times in forty-five years, so, and I didn't make that up, I was given that data because I've only sat in this seat for a year, I've been with the firm for six years, so that's the two-year guarantee and then the last thing is, we don't just finish, here's your, here's your candidate, congratulations, bye, we actually will come back, we do it in six-month intervals, most districts ask us to come back two to three times, so we do it in six months, the end of the year, sometimes eighteen months or twenty-four months, we have an assessment process where we come back and we actually do a, a time with the board and take them through a series of questions with your fairly new superintendent, take them through and then we facilitate a conversation, that is typically what goes on, you can keep it longer if you choose, you could not do it at all if you choose, but it's all included in our list of services. And now, if you don't mind, could, would you mind advancing, so what we're going to show you now, and you all read better than I speak anyway, but these are a list of comments from other board members from searches we have done, the real reason they're broken up with this and actually they're about to be replaced now that the pandemic seems to be somewhat moving on in the school environment, so we will actually have comments from districts during the pandemic because it has definitely affected all our behaviors, so you'll see those which will be, actually will be available beginning in September, what we really wanted to show you is, we, we do searches as small as sixteen hundred and we did down the road from you all, we did Hillsborough, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, actually in, in twenty-twenty, so it's more to show a scope of work, you also have a list of a number of people that, that's in the proposal, you can call as references, we can give you others, so that's that, so I want to conclude here very quickly with summaries, some, just some summary points and a few quick slides, we'll put up on the screen, you have it in your possession, the searches we've done in Florida fairly recently and then we'll move, and then we'll move on to questions, so, I just want to review on a summary fashion our unique size and scope, again, I don't want to be overtly repetitive, you know we're the oldest, I gave you the number of searches we've completed, we do have the largest pool of candidates in America and we typically provide particularly in this pandemic, post-pandemic timeframe, typically forty to fifty completed applications that we review as we get ready to present to you, the eight to twelve mostly, in your size, your district, you're going to see ten to twelve at least, is what I would call quarter-finalists, our engagement process is this comprehensive constituent community engagement, Karen outlined that for you in terms of these stakeholder meetings, which we take care of typically, when you say how many, a lot of districts, we do typically twelve to fifteen different groups, a district your size, it could be more, I don't want to tell you how many we've done for a district, but I will tell you one time, we did thirty-one, just don't hear that, in all kin, or it, that's your determination, the team is the five of us, the only thing I will add is, is that we have one of our outstanding, actually he's our regional associate in southwestern part of the country, also is our, is our lead Spanish interpreter, so he will most likely be joining us also in facilitating these constituent groups or if in no other, in no other reason than to do interpreting it as necessary, so that's where we go with that and obviously we are all trained facilitators, so this isn't just something we happened to pick up last week, the, the DEI and social justice commitment, we've talked to you about our organizational positioning, the one thing I'll say about it, we don't talk the talk, we walk the walk, our behavior, our placement and our associate representation speaks for itself, in terms of leadership outreach, as we've discussed, our associates become one of your best outreach, so you have to remember, they're strategically placed all over the country, they all have a Rolodex, or not in a Rolodex anymore, they all have a contact list in their computer, probably no less than two-hundred superintendents each and, and so we fan this out to our associates as well as what we put online, as well as what we do in placing your advertising, et cetera, but that contact element because of what we are and who we know in our regions is extremely effective and then obviously our longstanding relationships with, with work we've done with your state organization, so we will encourage you to place them with the Florida School Boards Association, Florida Superintendent's Association, et cetera, most likely you will place them, if we place them, most often it is more expensive because we're not members and you are and there's usually a separate rate for each, I don't know that that's true in Florida, but I can tell you it's true in about forty-five of the other states, so we will do the work for you. So we will do the work for you in terms of preparing the placement, but we will ask you to place it. We also have phenomenal relationships with the national organizations, and in most cases, we speak at their conferences as well as attend them. And then obviously, we have the largest website traffic there is in the country. And that's, the 28,000-plus is unique visits per month. And we have analytics that say that.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation. And with that, that would be 30 minutes, and we'll start to open it up to some questions.
Super. Do you mind just putting up the, you can see the quote, it's fine, and then the closing. Just if you want to for a second, Madam President, or Madam Vice President, just if you want to just see the slide with the searches on it, just to have a flavor, but you also have it in your possession.
Sure.
We don't want to take any time from your questions.
That's fine.
I'll be facilitating the fielding of the questions.
Okay.
That's all right.
Yeah.
So schools are fundamentally about relationships, relationships with students, with families, with teachers, with staff, with community members, with consultants. We enter this as wanting to be in a relationship with you and learn as much as we can about this whole district. So this next part, where we engage in questioning, is really important for us and for you. You know something about our backgrounds, our values. We have begun to learn a great deal about the complexity of this district, a budget of $1.6 billion, 120 schools, 95, 96,000 students.
Mr. Steve, could you please make sure you're speaking?
A district that is predictably growing in unpredictable ways, and so you are trying to figure out how to accommodate that with maybe more portables than you would like to see, a declining capital budget. You are looking at an incredibly diverse group of students, many languages spoken at home, nearly half of your students on pre- and reduced lunch. You're concerned about kindergarten reading and readiness. You have an excellent K-2 focus on reading. We are seeing the work you're doing to try and have a school choice for sort of redistricting and the complexity of that program. So we see a district that is wrestling with lots, the learning loss over the summer, the 25,000 we currently have in summer school. And there's something more that this district brings, and it's palpable to those of us who are looking and are familiar with districts, and it has to do with the level of care. We examine the profiles of all of you. We know that we have school counselors, teachers, those of you who have children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren in this system. We've watched the videos of bus drivers getting cupcakes for kids. We know the level of commitment that the community has and the partnerships with local colleges. So all of that is focused on the care that this community and that this board has for its students. We bring that same level of care. So we've talked about the who, the how is the process. The why is, we're in this because we care about kids and the relationship that we develop with you and how we can improve the lives of our students, of your students, and give them a sense of joy and purpose and success in life. So with that, we're welcome to hear all the questions and field them as detailed or as broad as you would like to go. Chair Jordan, I don't know if you have a process for how you want to.
Especially, there'll be Ms. Fine. We'll be running.
That's okay. All right. Let's, and let me preface this with, we're going to try to give each person on the dais and our two members that are calling in equal opportunities on the first round to ask questions, and then we'll go back to a second round, et cetera, until the 30 minutes is up. So, see, Ms. Gittens has a question, so we'll start with Mrs. Gittens, and the rest of you, get your questions ready.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for the presentation. I'll take this down for this. My first question is, we are close to being, very close to being, a $2 billion corporation, and one of the things that we had discussed previously is having someone with corporate experience. And as you described your team, is there anyone on the team that has more corporate than just education experience?
That's a great question. I know in Seattle, they brought in John Sanford, who had military background, didn't have an educational background, and he transformed that district years ago. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, because he knows the Rolodexes of our associates perhaps more than I do.
There are, I don't want to pick, somewhere between eight and 10 of us on the associate side that are somewhat similar to myself, Ms. Gittens, and that is, is that I spent 30, I owned a business for 39 years. One of us, 32 of those 39 years, as well as having educational backgrounds. I don't think anybody is, I can tell you for sure, there's nobody that's only corporate. It's what we would call hybrids, which are a combination of business or nonprofit leadership as well as educational leadership. But I will tell you that we are very comfortable and place somewhere between 10% and 15% of the people we place in, particularly the last 10 years, probably less since the pandemic. It was more popular in the 2000s to 2015s, and that was hybrid candidates who were more popular in terms of being placed as superintendencies. And we've placed more, because we have more searches, we obviously place more than anybody else. So hybrids are common.
Right.
An actual corporate leadership, with that being the only experience, is very uncommon.
And I wasn't expecting singular. I'm just saying that aspect. Okay, next question I have, real quick. On Slide 6, you were talking about the questions and all that you developed, and actually, I think you answered that because you did say that they can be customized. You had mentioned that, Ms. Hall, that you have the questions already prepared. However, we can input in that. Okay. And then on Slide 9, you talked about, you know, what is the reality of selecting a candidate once school has begun? We have discussed that, and I heard you talk about not poaching a candidate from somewhere else. And in my understanding, once school starts, it becomes a more difficult task. Is that correct? And so our expectations, once we get into this and get into the school year in August, September, that we really are looking at more of a longer term. Because, in my understanding, I wouldn't want somebody that has signed a contract to work for this district, and someone comes along and takes them in the middle of the year. And I don't think that's the quality of person I'm personally looking for that does not follow through throughout that whole year. So that's one thing. My last question is, I know that you have quite a presence in Florida, and I am wondering, have you or do you have a relationship or have spoken to any of the, my other governance team members in the past, or have a relationship with anyone else that's on the board?
On your board?
Mm-hmm.
No. Then I can speak for the other two, because we've discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jordan, you have some questions?
I do.
We're just going to go down the line, and let's keep in mind that we have 30 minutes, so try to limit so that everybody has a chance.
My question, I guess, is, thank you for coming, first of all. I really appreciate it and sharing the information that you have, but cost. We haven't, didn't hear anything on cost, so to me, that's really important. And I do see, it was definitely sent to us, you know, the cost breakdown, and I just wanted to just follow up on that as far as, and I know some had asked for an inclusive cost. I know that's impossible because of the fact, you know, coming back and forth and what that looks like. But as far as the estimated cost sheet that was sent to us, we're exactly, when I'm looking at this, I'm just making sure of what I am looking at, because it's saying an estimate of 30,000, but then on the other page, I know it was 26?
Yeah, if I may, President Jordan. The cost is $26,000.
Okay.
The variables are how many trips we make and the advertising you select. So that 30,000 is an estimate of a combination of advertising, travel on top of the 26. The 26 is fixed, and it won't be more. So, I mean, this isn't, yeah, and then there'll be 10% for this and 5%, that doesn't, that's not how we do business. What you see is what it is, with the exception of how much travel and whatever the advertising.
Okay. So when we look at, excuse me, so when we look at the travel, that the top portion of that, of the sheet, is what we look at per travel? Every time you come here, then, over and above the 30?
No.
No?
We're estimating that'll be, that should be somewhere around the travel cost total.
Okay, for the entire time.
Yeah, but please keep in mind, and I do want to share this with you, we'll do as you request, but that's based on the fact that we really understand this post-pandemic world, and there are some meetings that used to, in the past, be everything done in person. We don't believe those are necessary.
Right.
And all I can tell you is, we will have completed our 50th search in the pandemic environment where we have not been anywhere. So there's a very important blend to that that we recommend, and that's how come those costs can be contained the way they are. We will do as you wish. That's the one thing, President Jordan, that could move the cost above the estimated 30.
Okay, thank you. And I have to say, I really appreciate the fact that you could tell you really did your research on all of us, just by the comments that you made and knowing who we are and what we've done, and, you know, watching the meetings, which I really do appreciate, you know, the fact that you have gone, you know, and made sure that that was taken care of. And then the, my last question is, when you state that you go after the candidates, where do you go after them at? When you made that statement, we go after our candidates. You go to, other than the Rolodex, where else do you go? Like, do you have like a pool of, each of you have your own pool of candidates within the districts already that you would go after?
We will actually call people and tell them about this job, but more importantly, they will see this job. Everything goes through our website and that traffic. The other side, keep in mind, is that we make everybody that wants to be known and register, they have to register on our site every single year. It's not like it sits there for five years. They have to update everything. So that list is in the thousands. So, and we, so we will send out roughly 3,000 to 4,000 emails announcing this job separately. You will actually get a report from us when we bring you your eight to 12 candidates about how many people have been contacted, and how many states, and what's, and how many in each state, that we know at least received something in terms of an announcement, as well as the fact, you know, as well as the candidates that finished the application. Also, those that started an application are contacted twice before the closure if they haven't finished it. So if we bring you 51 completed applications, more than likely, there are probably 15 to 20 that are incomplete. They will have been reached out to separately earlier about, hey, if you're interested, complete the application, deadline's coming. So, but, so it's our associates, it's our electronics, it's our recommendation to you and your acceptance of the advertising that you place. And then it's, I mean, I literally have people that I literally call and say, Lee County's open. Who do you, you know? And these are people that have been sitting superintendents and that are in the field now.
And it is a prestigious district.
Yes.
With a vision. And so an attractive place for people to want to be.
And I want to add also, when candidates register, they may be a sitting superintendent, but they just, you know, want to know, maybe they want to make a move. When you go on the website, you select specifically how many students. So they say size, they say state, and then you receive those profiles. So it's not really a random thing. It really is a fit for what that person was looking for.
Okay, thank you.
It's nice.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Fisher, do you have questions?
Well, actually, I had questions about community groups, reaching the candidate pools, exposure and diversity, but with the thoroughness of your presentation, those questions have been answered already, and I thank you for being here, and I'm interested to hear the rest of the conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Member Fisher.
Okay, Mrs. Morgan?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, let's go to our members on the phone. Mrs. Patrica, questions?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is, could you please provide us, if you don't know off the top of your head, the bottom line cost to Hillsborough for the search you conducted there?
I'm sorry, the bottom line, repeat, please?
The bottom line cost of the search that was conducted in Hillsborough.
Ms. Patrica, I do not have that in my head. It will not be hard to get to you, and certainly, we can get to you this week. I mean, long, I have to call the office. Long before your 21st gathering.
I would really.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, it needs to go off. I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
And your second question?
And my second question is, by 10, it indicates that you will bring the top 8% candidates to the board for consideration, but it's wired to scanning that, some counties in Florida require the board and the public to have access to the information of all applicants.
Yes. That will be made available, but it will be very clear that we will have screened them once for you, and we will have done those first-round background checks on those. It'll be, Ms. Patrica, I'm very sure it'll be at least 10 to 12 of those candidates for your review, but they are available to, all the completed applications are available. There will be some slight redactions, particularly as it relates to references. And that's legal. We're very familiar with Florida law.
So that information will be available to the public?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. Those are my questions, and I apologize to Dr. Patric for all over you, but there is a lag here.
We understand. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Giavennelli, you have questions?
Yes, I have two questions as well. When is it the best time of year to search for a superintendent, can, have the best qualified candidate?
Well, there is, yes, there is an optimal, optimal season. There is an optimal season for hiring, but this time period that we're in, we have worked with this before with hiring over the summer. The good news for Lee County School District is you have an interim in place already. Where I live in Broward County, we're still searching for one. You have, as I mentioned before, an extraordinarily attractive district, a large district with a vision of great things to come, and so it will be an attractive place for people to look. And if we're looking, as we talked before, about a firm with national reach, the pool of candidates will be extensive. And so while hiring during this time period is not always optimal, I believe, and I invite Mike and Debra to talk about it, Karen to talk about it, but I think we're in a place where we can find good candidates to bring here. If it's any consolation, I began my superintendency in January.
Yeah.
And that often will happen.
Yeah, and in response also, and one last point, Ms. Giavennelli, and in response also to Ms. Gittens' comment from before, the fact of the matter is, you're not going to make a decision until July 21st. In reality, and you're not going to do constituent groups, I don't think, until school starts. We'll set you up. You'll be ready to go the minute school starts, so all the preliminary stuff we need to get out of the way will all be done. But you're going to want that input, and you're going to want that process. So I think the earliest, number one, you're going to have somebody sitting in the seat, if it's at all possible, is the beginning of January. To be upfront in terms of optimal, optimal ones typically start in October, November. There's a good news part of that for you, and I'm not just wearing my Pollyanna glasses. And that is, is that you'll actually be out in front of that search cycle, which really runs late fall through winter. And as Stephen has spoken, because you are who you are, being out in front of that, actually it can be a heck of an advantage. The search that starts at the end of May and right now, that's the most challenging. The optimal is probably starting before Thanksgiving and going there. The optimal is probably starting before Thanksgiving and going there, and you'll be a step ahead of that. So, the, you know, and I agree, Ms. Gittens, also, is that you, I think, President Jordan, you said the same. You don't want somebody that's not going to up and leave from somewhere, so the earliest they're going to show up here is the beginning of January. So, I, just to be clear, and I'm sorry to take so long, Mrs. Giovinelli, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay, thank you, and.
Thank you. I agree with that.
Did she have a second question?
Well, I think she had, didn't?
Yeah.
Did you, did you have a second question?
I didn't. I do.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, another thing in the presentation on page, oh my goodness. Regarding equity and inclusion, I, CRT is a hot topic these days, and we are a diverse community, yet we are a conservative community as well. What is your belief in the involvement of CRT with this search process?
Okay, go ahead.
What's the involvement of CRT within the search process? Mrs. Giovinelli, and I'm going to start, but I think Karen and Steve are encouraged to weigh in. We're not, we're not all immune or unconscious to what's going on in parts of this country as it relates to the subject. First of all, it's inappropriately used, number one. Number two is, there is no part of this, because we don't deal within the search process of specific curriculum items of any sort. We don't talk about certain kinds of math programs, et cetera. You're looking for an overall school leader. What we talked about in terms of diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice and systemic racism, is the behavior in which we practice and the candidates that we will bring to you, who fit those descriptives. That doesn't have anything to do with curricular content, and I honestly don't believe that that element has a conversation, as you look through, there's any more than some kind of math program or a particular language arts teaching style would have. So, that would be my initial suggestion.
I'm going to go next, but I'm going to sort of entree into Karen, because Dr. Hall wrote a recently published article, an excellent article, about the importance of us having honest conversations about race in America. But the way she framed the article was, to be able to have those conversations in a way that unite us, rather than divide. And, you know, we hope that we are bringing candidates to you that are able, are able to navigate a racially complex world, because that's the world in which we are all educating kids. But it's your search, and you will frame the questions that will bring to you the candidates have, that have the expertise and the vision that you are looking for.
Well, and essentially, to dovetail some of the comments Steve made, candidates that can navigate these situations, more than trying to convince, this is our reality, and you will have a spectrum of beliefs and philosophies, and so you need to have educational leaders who are well-versed, so they can engage and have conversations with everyone, and ultimately do what's best for students, and not to avoid, not to incite or inflame, but to be good listeners, and not to be afraid of having these difficult conversations, because everyone wants best for kids. But it's, it can be challenging right now, because things are on extremes. So, essentially, we're looking for people who can step up, lead, and listen to all point of views, and bring people together, build bridges, so we can do what's best for kids. That's what we're looking for. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about division. That's what we want to do as an organization, because of our sense of diversity and inclusiveness, we want to ensure that folks are comfortable, they can talk about it, can they operationalize it? Do they know how to ensure that there are, you know, disparities? What are you doing to ensure that there's educational equity? Not just talk about it and put it up on a poster. How do you operationalize it? How do you do it? Because at the end of the day, you want all children to thrive, and they have to know how to navigate the politics and ensure they hear everyone's voice. So, that's essentially what we're, we're trying to say, and what we're trying to do when we're bringing people to districts that they can engage in, are articulate around all of these subjects.
Okay, and, thank you, and.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to ask a question about, to have you expand a little bit on what you said about gathering stakeholders, the interviews that you, that you, or not the interviews, but the surveys that you send out to the community, and then, looking at that, the steps in that process, what does it look like in terms of your involvement when we have, when we get down to the final, let's say, three candidates, and we have some public forums? What exactly?
So, you're not talking about the stakeholders, the focus groups and the.
Yeah, I'm, that whole, yeah, if, if you can, I know it's two different pieces, but if you could discuss just a little more in detail, so we have an idea of what it looks like, as you engage our stakeholders, and then move it to the more specific forums.
Just under five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cashman, and thank you for that question, because it's critical. When we talk about relationship, those conversations, the focus groups that we have, the survey data that we gather, is one way of pulling people together and building those relationships. So, the, the focus groups, the, can look, we can have as many as you feel is appropriate, based on how you see your stakeholders. So, we've been in districts, and Mike, you can speak to this, Karen, you can speak to this, where, you know, there's been focus groups with the custodians, with the bus drivers, with, with small, you know, groups of people that have a different perspective, right? So, you're trying to build that. You have an incredibly diverse community here. So, Mike referenced, I know that 41, 42% of your students are Hispanic, so there may be a language barrier that would be important for us to consider, and so have some focus groups that would be for that, for those, those families separately, where we have someone who speaks Spanish. But we can, we can tailor those, the focus groups and the surveys, or go to everyone, but we can tailor those focus groups based on your desire. And then the only cost differential would be if we have to bring someone in to do the interpretation, et cetera. But as far as the three candidates, how do those focus groups, I know you've led a number of those, those forums, the town hall forum, so if you want to speak to that, Karen.
And before you start to answer, and if you would include the cost, because you would actually have people onsite, that would not be something you're doing digitally or online, or, okay, so if you can kind of, in the very.
Very, Vice President.
Three minutes we have left, two minutes.
We got two minutes. So, Vice President Vaughn, number one is, we, we expect that that's one of those we probably do do onsite.
Yes.
Okay, so that's in that cost, you know, anticipation. That's one. Two is, is that the large groups are actual structured focus groups. They take two to three days to do. We do four, five, eight a day. That's how we get through the front end. Okay, that's why you got five of us. Okay, not counting, not counting Dr. Monna. The two to three, typically, you're going to bring in your finalists, they're just going to take a whole day. They're going to have certain, so you take these broad groups, and you shrink them into a manageable number. They meet with two meetings with different staffs at different levels, or three. And then you have certain collective groups, you know, that you put together for two or three other meetings, and then you interview them. So, that's a whole day. And normally, it's one candidate per day. Okay? And it's very in-depth. Those, they, we actually ask those groups to give us questions, we modify them for you, approve them or edit them. And then the other thing is, all the impression sheets, each of those groups fills out impression sheets by groups, by identification. So, you know the three staff groups, you know what they think, you know what this community group, and then we also recommend an overall large community meeting, who can attend. The last thing I want to speak to is the survey. The survey is 33 characteristics. People are asked to pick the 10 that mean the most to them. We're going to ask you to publicize that everywhere. It sits on your website. When it closes, we give you the hard data analysis. It's a meeting that we bring all of it back to you. The comment section of that document becomes invaluable to your new superintendent and to you. It's almost like you conducted some polling.
Yes.
And you didn't pay for the poll, to be real blunt.
Great.
So, I hope that's clear, but we're also running out of time.
Yeah, I know you're running out of time, and I thank you for that. And it might actually, if I, I can just close with this, it might be helpful to all of us to have, if you have an example or two of districts, and it wouldn't even necessarily have to be in Florida, but districts where you actually did the.
Survey?
The survey, not this, well, the survey, and especially, I'm thinking about the onsite, what, what that's going to look like.
We can do all of this, examples of schedules?
Yeah, that kind of, yeah, if you could maybe just send us an example of one or two of the schedules and what it looked like for, you know, medium to large district that you served, if not in Florida, somewhere else.
Absolutely.
And, because I think we didn't really have a time to explore that, and I know we're, we're out of time for this.
Yeah, we'll just redact it. We'll, we'll redact the district, that's all. You'll see everything.
Right, right, just, just to give us an idea of what those schedules and what that looks like, and how long, and all of that, that each forum took. Thank you.
And thank you all for your time. We appreciate that. And with that, Vice Chair Vaughn, should we take a five-minute break?
And we have, on our schedule, we have a 15-minute break.
Yeah. Thank you again for, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Take care.[1326.75] Take care.[127.14]
...to a district and they analyze the HR department and make recommendations for improvements. John does a lot of that work as well as in some of the finance departments. Over here, we have Dr. Bill Vogel, who's a former superintendent, among other things. Of course, Mr. Reichert also was a teacher and moved up through the leadership ranks in school districts, so too was was Mr. Vogel, Dr. Vogel. Dr. Vogel was the superintendent in two different counties, in Seminole County and in St. Lucy County, and he was named the Florida Superintendent of the Year at one point. He also works with superintendents across the state through the Florida Association of District School Superintendents. So we bring a team that is board member experience, superintendent experience, HR experience, and that's really what we think is our strength. So when we ask why you should choose our firm, you know, the first reason is because we know Florida, and the reason we know Florida is because we're here every single day in one or more districts. In fact, these two gentlemen are going to be going to another district tomorrow. They were in a district yesterday. We continue to work actively with district leaders, aspiring superintendents, as well as seated superintendents and school boards. If you look at the areas where we have stars on there, well, first off, where the dots are, that's where, in Florida, we have appointed superintendents. Where we have the stars here, those are the superintendent searches that we have done here with the Florida School Boards Association. So I wanted you to know we've been, and that's just this team right here. We've worked in those districts to help them place superintendents since 2015. We also are a member of what's called the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, and the reason that's important is because, just as I said, we three work with all of the administrators in Florida. Our colleagues in other states work with all of the administrators in their states. And so when we get an out-of-state applicant, I want to know before the board members ask me, what do we know about this person? What do we know about their history in their district? What do we know about their work with their school board? And so we reach out to our NASS colleagues and are able to get some boots-on-the-ground information about anyone from any state. Additionally, and not just through NASS, but additionally, we really pride ourselves in the number of out-of-state and non-traditional candidates that we get to apply for our positions. We just finished the superintendent search in Polk County, and we had 53 applicants, which was our largest pool to date. I'm not sure if you guys can get that many applicants. It was a little bit of a different time. Things have changed even in the last several months in education, so that that might be a lofty number, but we were very proud to have 52, 53 applicants from a number of different states, and we we really were excited with with who they eventually chose. We, my team here and I, represent the board at various facilitation-needed meetings, like input sessions or community meetings, anything like that. We are onsite facilitators. We come down and we do a lot of that facilitation ourselves. We also come and attend board meetings and workshops. We do anything that is necessary to facilitate the conversations with the board. Sometimes that requires a lot of travel, but because we live in Florida, these two happen to live in Seminole County. He actually sometimes lives part of his time in Manatee County. We try to minimize travel when we can. My own self, I will definitely be here at key points along the way, but because of the travel, I don't I don't come to everything because I we try very hard to be conscious of charges that we're we're passing through to to the board. One of the things that both boards with whom we work and applicants with whom we work tell us that they value greatly about the service we provide is our consistent availability to answer questions and help guide them in the process. Board members have questions along the way, applicants have questions along the way, and we make ourselves available to the board and to the applicants as well as to the media if necessary. One thing that's really important and cannot be overstated is to make sure that whoever you work with has an understanding of Florida sunshine laws, public record laws, and how to work with media outlets. I know another district recently who was doing a superintendent search had some challenges because the truth of the matter is when when somebody applies, the minute they apply, it's a public record, but the firm that they chose didn't want to make anything public until the firm brought forth some names. And so that became a bit of a contentious issue. So I'm just kind of going to let you know of some things that you want to look at and things that you want to talk about. One of the things that we pride ourselves in is that we know your board, we know your community, and we know your district. We know the history of your districts. Like I said, we've been around for 20, 30 years in some cases, and so we know the challenges that your district has had. We know the transitions your district has faced. We know the current challenges that your district is facing. As I mentioned, our proximity reduces travel. These two fine gentlemen have been involved in education in Florida since 1977. It predates me at all, if I'm being honest, but I popped in on the education scene in Florida in 1987. I don't know if you realize this, but I started off as a high school English teacher. And actually, I did my student internship up the street at Charlotte High School in Punta Gorda, and I did my first teaching at Port Charlotte High School, and I also taught at Lemon Bay, among other counties along the way. We do utilize a team approach, and that is to say that any one of us can answer any question at any given time. We meet regularly. We have conference calls every typically, it's a Sunday evening to try to coordinate what's happening, what's going on. We work very closely with your staff. We work very closely with whoever you determine on your staff is going to be the liaison. Sometimes we need to work with your IT people. Sometimes we need to work with your communications or PR people or your legal. So we have a very team-oriented approach that we know includes your district staff members as well as our full team. One of the things that we pivoted to during the pandemic was we had to do a superintendent search almost virtually online because it was in the middle of that process. They didn't want to change their schedule, so we were able to pivot. And the reason that's important is because at any given time, we may need to pivot. We don't know what's happening. Last year certainly gave us some valuable experiences, and one of the things that we've implemented, which really became very popular and we now we actually think it's better than the live version, is when we do a meet the candidates. And years ago, well, two years ago even, we would have a live reception where people could meet the candidates, which I'm not saying that's not still of value, but when we did a Facebook Live, we had thousands of people viewing and watching and engaged in the process as opposed to a few hundred who would physically show up. So just that small pivot really taught us a lot about engaging the community and the interest in in communities. We really don't have like a plug-and-play, here's what you do, and this is the only process you can follow. We try to personalize it to each district. Some districts want more involvement, for example, of internal staff. Some districts want less. Some districts want more community input. Some districts want less. Some districts have a brand-new strategic plan that they've approved, and so they already have a vision. Some districts need more conversation about some things. So we work with the board to determine what their process will be for that board at this time. You might have a different process if you were going to do it last year or next year, but for now, under these conditions, here's the process that you might consider or might be best for you. So we we're not dug in on it has to do this, this, and this. There are certain things that we have to dig in on, things like sunshine, you know, things like that, but other than that, we're very flexible and work with districts. One of the key things that I think you need to take into account is that the board itself, the board, seven people, is the decision-maker for this activity. So you can involve the community in certain ways. You can even have community committees that do certain things, but all decisions have to be retained by the board, the board. And so we represent and we really advocate for the board to make sure and we protect your decision-making authority, and we make sure that that is in the forefront of your minds as you're moving through the process. On the backside, obviously, we have some additional services that we do with regard to helping your new superintendent onboard as well as working with superintendent evaluation, and those are some of the, you know, we really feel as though the position that we're in, we have a vested interest in the success of your district. It makes a difference whether or not you all are successful, and we understand that. So we are here before, during, and after a search, and that's what we bring to the table. That being said, and I want to be really, really clear on this, when you're doing a superintendent search, the ideal outcome is the unification of the board, the district, and the community. That's the ideal outcome. As I just mentioned, we worked in Polk County recently. We just finished their search. They had a disparate board to begin with. Throughout the process, members of the board didn't trust each other on certain things. They didn't trust the community in certain ways, but I will tell you, at the very end, everyone, the Education Foundation, the Chamber, the board, the district, they all said, wow, you know, this really brought us together. And that, to me, is something you have got to consider very, very seriously. One of the things that will help with that unity and that bringing together of people is that you have a process that is above reproach. You have to have a process with integrity, and you have to have a process that you can defend. Given that, I think you all know that there are there. Working with FSBA, for some people, creates a questionable process for you. And as the FSBA Executive Director, I have to tell you, we are not interested in working and doing anything, contributing in any way to any hint of impropriety on a superintendent search for you. I do not think that we are your best firm. I do not think that you, as a board, will be able to come together if we are your firm. I think we will be too much of a distraction, and I don't think it's going to be what's best for your community. That's not what I would normally say when I come here to do this presentation, but my job is to protect your integrity of this process and the integrity of my association. And so for those reasons, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm happy to offer any services as our member to assist you along the way, but it is not in your best interest to move forward with any questionable integrity on a search. And I really feel very strongly about that, so I wanted to say that as as early as I could, but I also wanted you to know, we do run a process with integrity. We stand by it. Every district we've ever worked with has been more than pleased with our work, but I do not think in this county it's the best answer for you. So we'll do whatever we can to support you, coming short of being your firm, and I'll answer any questions that you'd like me to answer at this time.
Thank you. With that, why don't I turn over for any questions. Turn it to Vice Chair Vaughn.
Okay, so questions, comments? Who would like to begin? Ms. Morgan?
I will just tell you, I have none.
Okay. Who would like? Ms. Gittens, you have questions, comments?
I do, but I just didn't want to go first, but I guess I'm.
Well, I can.
Why don't you do yours, since you always go last?
Well, it's it's protocol that the board vice chair go last in these, so I'm going to go to Ms. Jordan. Comments, questions?
I really don't have any comments. I think it's unfortunate that we're here at this situation, and I have spoken to, I really do appreciate what FSBA does, as I always have been with in the hospitality industry and always going to the Florida restaurant and hospitality industry and our connection with them. They were always our go-to as well because they understood what our needs were, just like you all understand what our needs are. So I'm kind of, I understand where you're coming from. I really appreciate that. And I have talked to and spoken to Polk County and the members on that board, and they were elated with what transpired there and what you all did, and they were available for anybody else to speak to, whoever wanted to speak to them. But each one of them that I did talk to, I'm sorry, they could not speak more highly of what you all do. So I just want to let you know that I do really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so so I'm going to add to that and say that as I'm wrapping up my third term on the board, I want to say that FSBA has always been my go-to and that I learned what I needed to know. There was always support. When you said that you were consistently available, that has always been the truth. And I'm disappointed that we're in this position right now. And are you saying then that you would not?
I'm saying your search has to be above reproach.
Absolutely.
And working with us would compromise that, and we will not contribute to that compromise.
And so I thank you for that, and I thank you for the consistent support that you give all of our districts and and the roadmap that you have provided for us to be as successful as we have been able to be in spite of challenges. Thank you.
But I do want to be clear, in the same way that I've been available on other issues.
Yes.
You guys working with somebody else, and I don't have any vested interest in who that may be, anytime you have a question along the way or a concern or you want to ask, hey, does this seem right or whatever, I'm available in that way. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. That's much appreciated.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, are you ready now?
As ever. Good afternoon, and thank you. And I just want to say thank you for, and I appreciate your honesty, and you have, you know, a history with this board and know what our issues are, so you do have the right and ability to speak in that way and what you have said. I too have spoken to fellow board members in other districts, and again, no issues at all with your organization and what you do and how you handle it. I can only speak for me personally that the the issue, the roadblock I have is that the leadership of FSBA and the the close proximity and in our ethics policy, it it there's not a statute, as we were told, that that prohibits Ms. Patrica as the chair from participating, but there is, whenever we do ethics training, they emphasize the avoidance of the appearance.
Exactly.
And that's what I'm leaning on, is the avoidance of the appearance. And if it were me in that position, I would have either accused myself or I would have made the statement that you made. Like I said, nothing against the organization or the job that you do, and I just, that's one of the things, if we weren't as closely aligned to the leadership. And, excuse me, when you are Executive Director of an organization that the the top leadership is on this same board, you have to communicate on a regular basis. You have to do the business of FSBA, and it is not saying that I think that you would do unscrupulous things. That is not it. But I go back to the ethics, the appearance of impropriety.
And it's really out of respect for that, that I where I I am where I am.
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I appreciate that you have offered to, you know, at least help us on various things if we do have questions, and in the past, you have done that. I, if we had a different culture in our district, I mean, top-down, if we had a different culture, it wouldn't be an issue. We have a culture right now, and I think everybody understands that part of it is distrust.
Mm-hmm.
And not just here or out there or there, it's a culture of distrust, and we need to heal from that. And that's why I'm thinking outside so that, and I like what you were saying too, you do not want to, that you do want to protect the integrity not only of us but of your organization, and that's totally clear. So based on those things, I understand what you're saying. I appreciate it. I spoke quite openly at the last meeting that I felt it was an issue because of the appearance. So I appreciate it, and thank you so much for being here today, and in the future, we may find ourselves working together again. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Jivinelli, do you have any comments, questions?
I do. And I apologize for the echo that I get. So it makes me hesitate and stop talking. So I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Messina, for being candor. I really appreciate that. Unfortunately, this board has difficulty doing that as well and kind of stepping back and looking at us as a whole and what is best for the community. So I appreciate you taking that initiative and telling us what we needed to be doing. So I do have a question for you. In your professional opinion and recommendation, should we go back and look at the applications that we had and finish the interview process with those other candidates for the integrity of the board and so that the community understands that we do our very best to do exactly what you do and model what you do?
So I don't know, I don't know enough details about how you got to where you are here today, partly because since I had submitted our application, I didn't, I didn't watch the meeting, I didn't do any of that, so I I'm not sure I could speak to that. I would say to you, my hope for you is that you will select a consultant that you all feel confident using, because I I think that it's really, really an opportunity for the board to find some common, some common goals, and so I would I would hope that whatever you could do, you could find somebody that all of you could agree on, and I and I hope for that for a superintendent as well, because as as Ms. Gittens said, you know, there's there's a lot that needs to be done, and the only way to do that is to really find common ground, find someone to lead that. So I'm sorry, I really don't know the process you went through to be able to speak to that.
Anything else?
Well, we had five.
They shouldn't be asking them that.
Applications that we all like, so now we narrowed it down to two. However, I didn't really agree why we only went down to two instead of interviewing all five and then making our decision at that. And I would recommend, let's go back to the drawing board and look at the rest, the four now that we have, so that the community sees that we're exploring every avenue.
Be that anyway. Mrs. Jivinelli, we are going to have a debrief following this conversation with FSBA, and I think this is something that our board needs to discuss and debrief about it. We appreciate the opinions of Ms. Messina and and her colleagues, but this this is something that is is for us. So if you don't mind, unless you have another.
I understand that.
Yeah, so save your your comments for our debrief. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So at this point, at this point, I mean, she she recommends to not work with us, I think that we, I mean, my my question really is, in her expertise, should we just go back to the drawing board? That's basically it.
I'm going to interrupt again. I'm hearing point of order, which was almost unnecessary because I was going to stop. If you want to contact, if you want to contact them individually to help you in in your decision-making, but that's that's really not the purpose of of this particular conversation, and we will be having that debrief, well, we will be discussing exactly this in just a little bit. Is that, does that help, Ms. Jivinelli? Ms. Jivinelli, is that?
I'm going to thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Okay, let me make my my comments, and then we will wrap up to see if anybody else had, in the second round, anything else that they wanted to say. I wanted to give my kudos and thanks to Mrs. Messina. Really, really appreciate your honesty and integrity in this. As was already mentioned by Ms. Gittens, this, we've had our issues, let's say, our challenges on this on this board, and all of this also comes at a at quite an important time. We've just ended, I'll just say, the school year from hell for everyone, and we have a very short summer, and we are scrambling to get things in order for the new school year in a very short time period. And while we do this, we have a new superintendent in place, and of course, he is interim, but as all of us know, interim means that Dr. Ken Savage is our superintendent. And so this is also a time of huge change, and it's been my experience, I've been living here in Lee County for 16 years. I'm more used to growing up in the Northeast where things changed rather rapidly, but the culture in this neck of the woods is that change is just harder, and I'm not saying that's bad or good or it it just is. And and so we're we're in a period of lots of differences and lots of opinions in the community, on this school board, among staff members of of the school district of Lee County. And I really appreciate what Mrs. Messina said, and I totally agree, that we do not need to add to, we don't need to add another distraction to to all of this, and her heart comes from an excellent place here, I believe, because she really is putting the needs of us first and understanding our situation. And whether we go with the firm that we've interviewed or whether we put that aside, keep our notes, and interview another firm or two, that's for our decision that's that's coming up in our debrief. But again, thank you, FSBA. Thank you for your candor, and I know that we will be reaching out for all kinds of things as as we have in in the past, so we really appreciate it. Now, round two, is there anyone who wanted to add anything else?
Ms. Gittens.
First of all, a point of order was called. It was not addressed by the chair or the parliamentarian. I just wanted to make that the record, for the record. And my point was that I was going to bring up as well whether they had removed themselves from the choice or not, that we need to have, like I mentioned last week when we had our first meeting, and I was voted down, that we should see all of the firms and make our decision from that. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I wanted, the reason for the point of order is that that was not the time for to ask our guests, per se, to give us a decision that is not. that is not within their purview to do. Thank you.
Yeah. And just for the record, I'm saying that there were a couple people calling point of order, and at the very same time, I, as the chair and facilitator of this meeting, was doing the same, was doing the same thing. So, I think that we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish there. In our round two, as we wrap up here, an opportunity for everybody to add a second thought. Did you have a second thought?
Yes, I wanted to...
Well, let me get the other people first. Ms. Jordan?
No, I believe I've said what I...
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Just once again, thank you for making the trip. We appreciate that.
Okay. Ms. Givinelli, any final thoughts? Ms. Givinelli? No?
No.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
You guys don't hear me.
And Ms. Gittens, you said there was something else you needed to say. Go ahead.
Yes. And not asking you to give us an opinion, but in your professional opinion and the situation that we are in right now, what, how long do you say a superintendent search usually would take? I'm not holding your feet to the fire, but we did that, asked that of the other candidates. And can you give us your professional opinion on, we are in July for all practical purposes and will not reconvene until the end of July? And can you give us your impression on that? Because my understanding is that the music kind of stops once school starts and the candidates are pretty much in place. And how does that affect a search?
I would tell you that you kind of need to work backwards from a start date that you might be interested in. We have done searches as short as three months, which were on a very aggressive schedule, and we've done searches as long as a year and a half for districts that originally had elected superintendents. And then, when the voters decided to change to appointed, we've had a year and a half process. So, you can make it work in any timetable. Minimally, if you want to have what I believe is meaningful engagement with your local community, with your district, as well as a good advertisement period, six months would be the minimum, eight months, six to eight months. I will say you have to kind of build in the holiday season, which I think we're looking at. So, that piece does play a role. And if you're looking into the spring for interviews, you need to be careful working around spring break because if you schedule interviews during spring break and families or others have traveled away, things we really have to take into account.
No, 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 and I understand. Okay. All right. I appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay. So, I believe we will be wrapping this up now, and again, our appreciation, appreciation from all of us for your taking the time to come here to Lee County. And I know we'll be seeing you again in, definitely in other roles. So, thank you.
And please know, you know, we sincerely wish you much good luck and success. I mean, as I mentioned, I lived in Charlotte County for 20 years, I want to say. In fact, I was telling Bill and John, I used to come to this building when it was a factory outlet mall. I don't even know if some of you lived in town when it was a factory outlet mall, but I sure did. And so, you know, I know this area. I'm from around here. My, I have, you do not know this, but one of my dearest nieces works for you. She's a, she's a speech therapist for you. I shall not tell you her name, and I shall not tell you where she works. But I do have people that live in this community, right over by the Edison House. I mean, Lee County is a place I visit frequently, visit often, and it's a lovely, lovely place to have family. So, I wish you much good luck and success, and you know that anything you need, please feel free to call on us.
Yeah. And we do know you wish us good luck and success, or you wouldn't have been brave enough to come out and say what you did. So, again, thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. So, let's take a moment, if you would like to greet, take a moment to do that, and then we'll be doing a debriefing before the public comment.
Very nice to meet you. Look forward to seeing you.
I hope so.
We'll be covering, we'll be covering an extra topic we hadn't planned on, which is how we want to go from here in terms of search firms.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Vaughn. In light of what we just heard, I did want to suggest that we discuss, you know, as a board, a decision whether to make a determination based on the two firms you heard from or bring back the dialogue of considering other search firms. I do want to share before we go into that, the intent of the short debrief was a follow-up to a previous board meeting, and that was just to coordinate from the board how you would determine the recommendations. Is there a board lead who would look for recommendations? I'm sorry, the board references, the search firm references. So, the board was looking, looking for direction on how you would coordinate finding more about the references and doing the reference checks. And the second is to finalize any questions you had with the costs. So, those are two topics that you could determine if we need to resolve that today, but that came up last meeting. And then, the third point of business is to address whether the board is going to make a decision based on the two firms you heard from today or add some additional firms. So, I'd like to first suggest, since we heard from Florida School Board Association, that they're planning on not pursuing further, that the first thing you discuss as a board is your decision to decide on the two firms you heard from today on the 21st, when you have your next meeting, or have consensus if you should consider bringing on back the other three. I want to go through them. You had, the other firms were GRR Recruiting, Hazard Young, Atea, and Associates, and McPherson and Jacobson. So, I'd like to open to discussion on a recommendation from the board. Proceed with these two or consider bringing on additional search firms. Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Gittens?
Yes. I would like to proceed with our original plan and proceed with what we have now.
Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Morgan?
I believe I brought up at our last meeting when we got to this point for today, that we should hear from all of the firms, and I still stand on that. I believe that they are professional groups we should hear because even just like today, there were things that I heard and understood better from being face-to-face with the applicant. So, I, I think it's only fair to just listen to everybody. I mean, some of the things that knocked out some of the candidates may have been okay for this reason or that, but I think we need to give the opportunity just to open up. If it's correct, it'll still shift out, sift out to where it should be.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
So, I'm prepared to proceed as is. I don't see the need to bring other candidates in at this point. I'm also concerned about timing. I think we're, if we do not be, if we're not meeting again until almost August, and then we're going to talk about interviewing firms and go through this process again, I think we're just, we're wasting our time. And we're hurting the district.
Okay. Other comments? Vice Chair Vaughn?
This is first, but we can have a jump in?
Yes, Ms. Patrica. I'm going to hear from Vice Chair Vaughn, and then I'll call on you. Vice Chair Vaughn?
I was going to agree with Ms. Morgan. I was impressed with the presentation by Ray and Associates, and I feel like we should proceed as we, as we start it on this, on our timeline.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Mr. Cashman, could you please refresh my recollection as to the consensus vote on the other firms to include Ray and Associates?
Yes, just one moment. This is the...
This is all the scoring.
Okay, in front. In the last meeting, Ray and Associates in the top two had five board members up front who picked them in the top two, and Florida School Board Association, three of the board members had them picked in the top two. The other three firms, GRR Recruiting, Hazard Young, Atea, and Associates, and McPherson and Jacobson, all had two board members who picked them in the top two. So, today you heard from Florida School Board Association and Ray and Associates, they were among the top two. And then, so we have, the consideration now is to, thank you, either stick with the two we have or consider the next three.
And then, this was the vote.
That was the vote? Okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you. What I'm looking for is the consensus to hear from Ray and Associates. So, if I recall correctly, at the end of the process, we went through and asked for thumbs up, some sideways, or thumbs down, and Ray and Associates and all the others. Do you know those numbers?
Ray and Associates was the, right here, seven zero for Ray and Associates. HYA had six to one vote for no. GRR, five to two, was no. McPherson, four to three, no. And Florida School Board Association, four to three, yes. So, the next closest was a four to three.
I'm prepared to move forward.
So, you're prepared to move forward with the current two?
For any candidate we have.
Chair Vaughn, in a moment, I'll ask for consensus. First, can we hear from Ms. Givinelli?
I'm sorry. Before you take that, may I ask a question?
Yes, thank you.
So, we are moving to a consensus for Ray and Associates before we move to a consensus on whether we should accept, look at other firms? I think that's a little bit backwards.
Can you say that again, Ms. Gittens?
I said, we are making a consensus to select one firm when what was being discussed is whether we should see the other firms.
Correct.
And all of a sudden, I don't know what happened, but it was changed to, we're going to take a consensus on Ray and Associates. That's not what we were discussing.
That's correct. The consensus is, would the board prefer that you stick with the current two search firms from today, or is the board providing direction to seek additional information from the other three firms?
That's worded differently, but fine. Thank you.
Mrs. Givinelli?
Well, I think we need to be practicing inclusive and making sure that everybody's equitable, and we're not even that. I think we should be listening to all the other applicants and their presentations and then making decisions. I don't see the rush when it's not the optimal time to be looking for a student in it. We had two. Both applicants suggested that this is probably optimal time. I know there was one of those applications that had a higher fee, that's negotiable, and I bet we could probably negotiate that if that's what we like. Don't even know because we could give opportunities for them to have a presentation. I would like to see and hear from all applications that have a presentation, and that was equitable and fair in the process. And we need to start leading by our actions, and instead of talking into the talk, we need to walk it out. And I think we need to be listening to everybody and listening to their presentations. So, we can only practice what we, we try to preach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givinelli. Chair Jordan, and then Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. What I was going, my concern is, is the fact that, yes, they, Ray and Associates did a great presentation, but they're winning by default because of, you know, someone not being here. I do have a problem with that. When we look at the scoring, and I, I do, as I just showed you, I have everybody's how we scored on that particular day. So, and the next one that would come even in line with the FSBA was actually, McPherson was the one who came in next with the same scoring. And then, GRR was the next one. HYA, pretty much everybody said no to that one. So, to me, that would not even be in consideration because of the fact that we had, that was a six to one vote. But the other two, McPherson, as I said, was the same as FSBA with the, still the no, and GRR was five to two. So, I would definitely, and I know that there's the time and everything, but I think that for us, I think we really need to, to have the opportunity to hear someone else where this one group is not winning because of the fact that FSBA has withdrawn. I just, I have a problem with that.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes. So, I think we've already done the work as a board, and we have vetted these firms. So, with a seven to zero, yes, with Ray and Associates, we already made that decision. And I disagree that they're winning by default because we've already vetted...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I just want to remind the audience, because we are hearing you up here, so if you could please, I, we appreciate your engagement, but it is distracting to the board. So, if you could, thank you.
Excuse me. You're out of order.
You're out of order.
You're out of order. You're out of order, sir.
You are out of order. Please sit down.
This is the last warning. I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So, we have already vetted all five firms, and we legitimately came to an agreement, seven to zero, seven to zero, that Ray and Associates were the top choice anyway. I appreciate Florida School Boards Association making a stand and not putting themselves in a position to jeopardize the integrity of the board or their own organization.
Good job jeopardizing your own integrity. Listen to your...
No, that was your, that was your...
That was your second time. Would you please escort the gentleman from the chamber?
Just a reminder that we do have to keep decorum in the chamber, and we do ask you to please cooperate so the board can do their work.
Where's public opinion?
Officer, this isn't negotiable.
Officer, this isn't negotiable. I'm going to call for a five-minute recess while this matter is taken care of. Five minutes.
Hello, my name's Amy Moore. I am from Lee County. I live in Estero. Same, pretty much, I echo, I'm echoing what he says. How can we feel that the actions of the board are legitimate and in the best interest of the students and the families of Lee County? When behind closed doors, the board went rogue and suspiciously narrowed down the playing field from 30 to 2. We have a group that is representing, in my opinion, ideas of the radical left, leftist agenda that I think are absolutely corrupt, especially for the minds of very impressionable young students. I don't know if I need to remind you that this is, in this country, officials are elected by the people. And in coming before the people and choosing freely to offer yourselves as candidates, you are literally voluntarily stating that you will make decisions that reflect those which are in the best interest of the people and are of the people of Lee County. In my opinion, there is no voice for the members of the community through the board when we are not agreeing to hear from the other companies. It has not been my, what I've seen, what I've seen as far as when you guys are saying you're unwilling to listen to the other groups. We need to listen to the other groups, because right now we have a very, the group that was here has a very, the agenda is very poor for the people, the kids especially. You need to serve as the voice of the people and not overreach your, not have power, I mean, it seems like you're being more, overreaching your power as far as, let's see, it's also my observation that you guys are promoting an agenda by not listening to the other people. The language of the agenda that you're promoting is suggesting socialism, communism, and I assure you that the American people don't want those... ...
So the policy allows for the public to speak during a briefing meeting at the end of the meeting. We've already had a significant portion of this meeting complete and you're just pretty much dealing with some loose ends at this point. So that's why we can move forward, but we're not changing the policy. I'm gonna make sure that's very, very clear. So at this time, Madam Chair, would you like me to move forward with public comment?
Did we finish the last train of thought?
Yeah.
Please, please, please. We can't call out. We can't call out. Please, please, please.
Okay, so let's go ahead and then if we're... before we give that direction, let's hear the public comment. Attorney Dupree Bruno, would you read the information on public comment, please?
Is there anything else in terms of the discussion from the question that was posed by Mr. Cashman? That's why I want to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to make their comment.
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
Yes, my comment was, I agree with Ms. Jordan because when in that meeting, when we had five potential candidates, the two that were finally selected were not my choices. So therefore, I did by default have to go along with the two choices that the majority of the board chose. So for that reason, I think we need to look at other choices. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments, I'll move forward with public comment. And this will be the one-time public comment for this briefing. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter from this meeting's agenda. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the central microphone. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board vice chair will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on today's agenda. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11. The time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name prior to making your comment. And Madam Chair, we have... speakers.
Okay, is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak who did not have a chance to fill out a blue card? Okay, would you mind giving the blue card? Okay, there you go. Anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, so Mrs. Dupree Bruno, would you please call the first speaker?
Will the following individuals please line up? Mark Gillespie, Amy Moore, Tara Jenner, Darrell Slack, Karen Ressey.
Mark Gillespie, Cape Coral, Florida. I was very pleased with the actions of the second search company that came in. And for a second, I thought I saw a little bit of a ray of hope with trust issues that we have. Every one of you sitting up there, I think, is in agreement that there is a lot of dissension between the community and the school board. There is some distrust between the community and the school board. And as adults, I think we have to ask ourselves how that happened. The community is not the ones making these decisions. It's the board. So if there's a distrust issue, if there is a trust issue between the community and the board, then maybe the board needs to take a step back and analyze actions, motivations, and decisions that you've made that has led us to this point. I haven't been involved in this all this long, but when I sit back here and I look at the faces, and now that I can see faces because most of the mascara off, I see disdain on some faces. I've always seen eye rolling. I've seen some physical, you know, body language that has spoken much louder than words ever would. So from sitting out here, I see a trust issue. I'm having a difficult time believing what I'm seeing and hearing right now. The best way to fix that is to change your actions, change your motivations. And I believe the best way for us to start with this would be to go ahead and introduce the other three companies and what everything fall where it may. We're not going to have a new superintendent by the start of the year anyways. If you truly believe what you told the second company that was up here about the importance of being above board, being above reproach, and instilling trust back into the community, which is what I thought I heard you say to them was a good thing, then it would be in your best interest and the community's best interest for you to put a little bit of hustle behind the muscle and call those other three companies back in and go ahead and hear from all three, and then make your decision based on that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Moore. I am from Lee County. I live in Estero. Pretty much I'm echoing what he says. How can we feel that the actions of the board are legitimate and in the best interest of the students and the families of Lee County? When behind closed doors, the board went rogue and suspiciously narrowed down the playing field from 30 to 2. We have a group that is representing, in my opinion, ideas of the radical leftist agenda that I think are absolutely corrupt, especially for the minds of very impressionable young I don't know if I need to remind you that this is... in this country, officials are elected by the people. And in coming before the people and choosing freely to offer yourselves as candidates, you are literally voluntarily stating that you will make decisions that reflect those which are in the best interest of the people and are of the people of Lee County. In my opinion, there is no voice for the members of the community through the board when we are not agreeing to hear from the other companies. It has not been my... what I've seen, what I've seen is as far as when you guys are saying you're unwilling to listen to the other groups. We need to listen to the other groups because right now we have a very... the group that was here has a very... the agenda is very poor for the people, the kids especially. You need to serve as the voice of the people and not overreach your... not have power. I mean, it seems like you're being more overreaching your power as far as... let's see. It's also my observation that you guys are promoting an agenda by not listening to the other people. The language of the agenda that you're promoting is suggesting socialism, communism. And I assure you that the American people don't want those kind of things here in this nation.
Next speaker, please.
Tara Jenner. To paraphrase, people don't care what you think until they know that you care. Obviously, it's said better than that. But let me go ahead and just say that the people that are on this side of the dais care about the school district. And you guys have said on many occasions you care too, and I will take that at face value. So I'd like to start with the common ground that we all want to do what's in the best interest of the school district, specifically the students, but also the rest of the community, the teachers, the staff, the taxpayers, the employers, the future employers, and the future employees in this district who will be served by those who graduate and go through the ranks of the Lee County School District. And as such, what I would like to do is I'd like to focus on the fact that we've now had two occasions, the interim school district superintendent search and this one where we've had an attrition when you have already decided to narrow down the field that you were going to interview. And as such, I think that it is imperative that you open up this particular search option again and add in the other three candidates. Specifically, the consensus that you guys reached before included the FSBA in that matrix. If they weren't there, that might have totally changed how those numbers came out. I don't know that, but we won't know that until you actually interview and evaluate those people. Another thing I'd like to point out is one of the companies was basically dismissed during that consensus because of financial reasons. Sometimes you actually pay for what you get. And without knowing what they stand for and who they are, we don't know whether or not they might not in fact be well worth the dollars that they were requesting as part of their profile. The second thing... third thing that I'd like to mention is that you were going to interview five candidates for interim, an hour and 25 minutes each. This is five candidates now, excuse me, three more candidates that would only be an hour additional. So it's not that big a burden. And even FSBA, who pulled out, they said that you're not behind the power curve. In fact, you're ahead of the power curve. As long as you get started by October, you're fine. So there's no super duper rush to be able to get going, to be able to start by October... I mean, excuse me, by August. And the final thing that I would like to do is I would like to caution the board members to consider as a consensus vote, you don't have to consent, say no, and demand an actual up and down vote so that it's very clear where everybody stands on this. Because I think that you're doing us a disservice when you do that. And I would finally end up by saying that there's a real potential...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please line up. Denise Nystrom, Timothy Peterson, Kristi Divageli, Stephanie House.
Denise Nystrom. The four-three vote, it really comes as no surprise with regard to the people that voted no. You know, I came from a school district where there was a lot of transparency. I was blessed. I was an assistant superintendent in two districts where the board did not have their own agendas. It didn't mean they always agreed with each other, but it meant that they talked things through and they did what was right for the benefit of the community. I would wish the same for this board. We in the public have been belittled. I'm trying not to use the word accosted by a particular board member. You know that. I sent you an email last night. That kind of behavior is intolerable. It should not be accepted. The Florida School Board Association, in my estimation, needed to recuse themselves. And if there was the professionalism on the board that deserves to be there, they would not have been in that position. And that's incumbent upon all of you to do something to stop those kinds of things from happening. And I do want to thank the four of you that allowed us to speak before taking a consensus. I don't know if you remember, but a while ago, I stood here and I was explaining to you the process of interviewing because that's something that I oversaw and conducted thousands of interviews. I asked you then, please, narrow it down to 10 or 15 candidates, and then narrow down your search from there. That is exactly what Ray and Associates said to you. They didn't say, out of 31, choose five, have three drop out. They also told you that public involvement was important and that they sent out impression sheets and that the optimal... and that there is an optimal season for hiring, and that is not now. It's not at least until October or November, and that's just the beginning of the process. A midterm hire gives you the candidates that have interviewed in other school districts and did not get selected. Did not get selected. And it certainly does not give Dr. Savage an adequate amount of time to show this district what he is capable of so that you can make a fair assessment when you are deciding who the next superintendent will be. And I agree with Tara's point that sometimes you do get what you pay for and you need to hear the last three search firms, and then try to negotiate with somebody if they're too high, but at least see what it is that they have to offer in fairness to our students. I am not going to be told again that I don't love this county or that I don't love these children, which is what we have been told by a board member. I love this county and I love these children.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Timothy Peterson. This is the first time I've been to one of these board meetings. I don't have kids. I was homeschooled, so I'm very... don't really have much reason to be here, but I'm trying to do what I can, and so I'm here. I have some notes here, so give me a second. Gittens mentioned that the culture has some distrust in it. And you had posted out on the door out here that anybody who causes disruption can be taken out, removed, as I saw, and you did exactly what it said. I actually looked up the reference that you said that was on there to the law. And one of the things I noticed on there is that it said that this meeting is required two days prior to have, as we posted in the newspaper and has to be on the radio. And I realized that that's actually part of why the distrust is here, because you don't put it on social media or TV. And I'd like to recommend, I don't know if it's in your power to do that or who it is, but that needs to happen because that's the reason why there weren't 200 people here like I had expected when I walked in. I was very surprised to find the five people who I happen to know. I wanted to say that I was really happy that someone did bring up the critical race theory and did ask that first firm about it. And I was impressed that they answered the way they did. Honestly, I thought that was a really good answer. And like, I just, I don't think I like those people as far as like their beliefs, but they gave a good answer that it's not really part of the decision. So I just wanted to say I was impressed by that. From what I understand, you six up there are elected. And from my perspective, I kind of see this idea of you using a firm to hire someone as a shield to protect you from being blamed if it doesn't go well. And maybe that's not the intent of it. And I also talked to someone else, and they said that you don't know how to... like, you're not equipped to hire someone, just you guys on your own. You really do need help. And so I understand that, but I'd rather have it be elected. But you can't have an election if there's nobody here, and there's nobody here, as you can see. So like, you guys are really in an impossible place, and like, you really need more people in on this in order to get the trust of the people. So the last thing I want to mention is that Ray and Associates brought up, it was on one of those slides, that they had 33 characteristics that they're looking for. Nobody asked what those were. I am all for having people of character, but I happen to know that there's 49 of them. And so my dad taught character, so I kind of know this. And the number 33 is a bit suspect just from like a religious point of view, and I could not find those 33 qualities. And I called, and the lady said she would email them to me, but I haven't gotten that either. So I'm kind of thinking it's hard to find.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Kristi Divageli here. So I emailed you guys last night, and I email all of you, including the superintendent, so I don't know that I need to repeat all of it in my email. However, I do feel that I want to touch on just a few things. One is public trust. Obviously, that's been talked about a lot today. It's really hard to have trust in a board that makes it very difficult to find things, to get answers to questions. You know, you've made it very hard for us to believe you when you say that you value our input, considering a majority of these meetings that they take place during business hours, and they take place in the middle, not just in the middle of the day, but in the morning as well. Like, even at a time that it would be unreasonable to ask the average, everyday working person to come maybe on their lunch. But even then, you know you're going to have to take half of your day off because these meetings are never short. So that's an unrealistic expectation that you're asking of the public, number one. Number two, your YouTube channel.
So Mr. Divageli, excuse me. So this is a briefing. You can only address what's on the agenda.
It has to do with the superintendent search, right?
Yes.
Yes, and this has to do with the superintendent.
Has to do with the search firm, which is what the board was talking about today.
This is transparency. I would love my time back because I'm having a conversation with Ms. Bruno here, and this is not part of my public comment. So you could just back that up like a whole 30 seconds, please. I would really appreciate it. But it is, I'm coming around to it, I promise. I'm not just going to go on a... I'm not going off on the rails here. I have a point to make, and it has to do with the search firms. So I'm still waiting for that 30 seconds. Are you going to bring the clock back, or are you going... there we go. No? I just went from one minute and 37 seconds to 45 minutes. You don't want me to talk for that long. I don't want to talk for that long. I'm just going to start talking, and you guys can kind of figure that out. So anyway, what I was saying was, you want transparency... we want transparency from you, not just from you guys personally, but in this whole process that has to do with, yes, the way that you conduct the search, has to do with your YouTube channel and the fact no public comment is allowed. It has to do with the superintendent search, the website. That is probably the most transparent part of this entire process that we've seen so far. The candidate search that you guys are doing, that we were just talking about today, you can't decide from two people, from two firms, when one of the firms drops out. It's no longer a decision between two firms. It's now, do we decide on this one firm, or do we go back and we interview all firms? That's the decision here. Do you care about what we have to say? If you do, then act accordingly. Don't just sit up there and say, have a four-three vote. Again, that's no, even though you've heard the public. So please take into consideration what we have to say. Please. Like, I don't think it's too much to ask of you guys.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie House, and I know all of you, and I'm sure a lot of you know me too. You know I don't really need a microphone. Well, I'm here because you invited me to come. You always ask me to speak up and let you know about my opinion, and that's what I'm offering. What I saw here this afternoon, first of all, I was late because I didn't know anything about this meeting. I don't really care for that. When I go to your website, the last meeting I attended, you say you put the information out there. It wasn't out there on your regular calendar. Then I find out, well, you got a lot of links to that calendar. Well, your general public, and I'm part of them, we don't know that. So I'll take care of that later on. I keep people informed. So that's why you have this little, small group here today. I don't know why you don't want everybody to know everything that's going on, but I'm going to make sure the word gets out. Everybody should know about this meeting because we all want to know what's going on when this superintendent selection is going on. And I did speak about that at the last meeting I attended. Okay, we'll move on to the next thing. When you see your board members that can't get along together, that's not a good thing. Diversity, that starts at home, right there on that board. When you don't get along, we can't trust you. We can't trust you, we're not going to really respect your opinion. And your opinion says you're going to narrow it down to two selection committees? No committee should be selected by default. From five to one by default? Who should I trust? A defaulted committee? I've been in this county long enough to know some of your superintendents came in by default. They didn't last. I don't like that. They didn't do... I don't even know if they were in position long enough to do a great job. I know a couple of them I really didn't trust either. When I look at some of those people on the board up there, I really like you. But God tells me I need to love everybody. That doesn't mean I can respect your position and your title. That doesn't mean I really have to like you. I pray that you like me because we're all God's children. We really need to love one another. That doesn't mean when you select your next superintendent, I want you to do it in haste. You know that other adage that says, haste makes waste? So that means when you put that superintendent in place, you might not have him or her there long. And I said her. That means it's time for you to start selecting some minorities. Minority means male, female. Some people might be a different skin color. You need to take your time and choose who you're going to put in that position. And that board, when the group you had there selecting said, you don't need to do it quickly. So that doesn't mean when school starts...
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair, that concludes public comments.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Dupree Bruno. Okay, so let's get back to our board business. Back to Mr. Cashman. I'm sorry?
This is my...
Oh, it doesn't sound like it is.
How about this mic? Is this mic working? Okay. Working. So based on the discussion you've started having, you've heard from the public input, and Florida School Board Association had shared that they would not be moving forward. As I'm facilitating, what I was looking for is direction from the board, if you would just stay with the existing firms presenting today, or if the board would provide direction in reviewing the other firms. So I wanted to have that discussion and then get direction from the board. Attorney Dupree Bruno, am I asking that correctly?
And since they've already made their comments and had discussion, really a poll of the board at this point for a consensus.
Okay. So to clarify, the poll and the direction, what I'd like to hear is, is there the board direction in terms of bringing the other three firms in for presentation? Or sticking with the firms that you heard from today, hearing that Florida School Board Association has dropped out? So Attorney Dupree Bruno?
I was going to say perhaps. Just ask them whether or not they are in agreement to add additional firms to the list. Yes or no consensus?
Perfect. So getting consensus and direction to add additional firms to your list for review. We should start with Mrs. Morgan.
I know, I just don't know what I'm going to say. I'd have to say I'm still prepared to move on at this point. Okay.
Vaughn?
No.
Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, add additional.
Chair Jordan?
Add the addition.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Giavanelle?
I'm yes. Yes, add it if not.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica?
No, thank you.
So Vice Chair Vaughn, based on the direction of the board, the board is not interested from a four-to-three in terms of poll, not interested in exploring other search firms.
Okay, so that's our directive then, that we are going to finish... we need to have the conversation just to put, before we go to a formal vote at an action meeting on this, that we need to take a look at the expenses and that we also need to check out the references, just to be sure that we completely vet this organization.
Yeah, that's correct. And so taking one at a time, the references, direction from the board, how would you like to pursue the references and coordinate that effort? to pursue the references and coordinate that effort?
What ideas do you have on that?
Can I, may I ask, Mr. DePree Bruno, is that something that we would, your recommendation as far as the references? Would it be us, who would do that? Or would we ask procurement to do that for us? The department? As far as who's going to ask for references? I mean, I know we've called on references already for these different companies, so we, well, I assume we all have. I know I have. But I'm assuming that we all have had the opportunity to, to speak to all of their references. So I don't know if we need to do more calling on the references, or is that something that...
It would not be procurement. Now, if the board chooses to make some additional phone calls, or if the board wants a staff member to make a phone call for them and check all the references, that's up to the board's directive.
But who would they look at to do something like that? And what departments?
VHR.
Would be HR that would make a phone call.
For, for a firm?
In this particular circumstance, because you're not going through the procurement process, this is for professional services.
Right, correct. We're doing it ourselves.
Or, or the board can do it. So it's, you can designate one board member to make the phone call. I mean, it really is up to the board's desire.
Ms. Gittens? Ms. Gittens, did you have a question?
I thought in the beginning that we talked about the board doing this search and not involving, and in this case, it would be HR to vet. And also, have we not vetted to get down to the two? Didn't everyone make phone calls and, and discuss it with other districts and, you know, customers that they had? And, you know, I, I, I still say it was by default for me. It was either them or FSBA, and I felt because of the circumstances, I didn't want FSBA. So, but here we are, and the majority has spoken. So I believe that we vetted. I don't know what other vetting and who else you can include in this process. Perhaps I would like to have an opportunity to speak to them one-on-one, and that can be done, we've got between now and the 21st to make this final vote. So I just don't see where we need to add another step, or add another person, or another department, or, I, I think we've done it. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Vice Chair Vaughn?
What, what I would suggest, since we are in the final step, that, that those who have made, made those phone calls, hopefully, if they have records of, you know, how Ray and Associates put up a list, and they had quotes from, from different people. I, I think that in our final, our final presentation, our final, the final finals, if you will, that it would be helpful to show the, the general public, and I'm talking about the public out there that we don't see on a, on a regular basis, but who are following and interested, perhaps some of the comments that we received.
Okay.
May I, I'm going to ask those of you who called, do you have quotes and, and comments exactly that we could share with the public when we put on our website that we have selected this firm? And these are the reasons. Ms. Jordan?
I'm sure we can gather that. And then they also had stated that they would send us the updated, because this is from 2020, but I believe that, gentlemen, oh, my goodness. Stated that Bill stated that he will do, that he would go ahead and send us updated versions of their comments for the 2021 and the COVID area. So he was going to, I'm sorry, Michael, Mr. Collins, that he was going to send that to us. So we will have those as well.
However, that's gathered, and I think it's probably more compelling if it has been gathered by one of us, or several of us. I, I think that should be out there on, on the website with our rationale for selecting this, this firm, albeit by default. But, you know, when you, when, when you say the default, it makes it sound like, you know, I, I think of two teams that are going to play, and one team doesn't show up at all, and, but they were the champions, and the other team, I mean, it, it's not like that. It's, it's not like, you know, we haven't had a chance, we, we haven't obviously shared our rubric, but, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, certainly the presentation that we had doesn't seem like it's going to be one where, you know, no, we can't possibly think about that firm unless I'm, unless I'm totally wrong about, about that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And then I'll go back to see if there's, just to get some direction, how you wanted to coordinate that effort. Ms. Gittens?
My suggestion for coordinating it is, we have until the 21st. We have the opportunity for any one of us as a professional board member to contact them. We have the contact information. We have their resource information. We have all of that. So leave it open for those that want to or choose to make those contacts, and then maybe send you something as to our findings, so that on the 21st, we can have it all together and say, you know, or we can give our comments then. So I, I'm just, I, I don't want to narrow us down to choose somebody to do what I can do for myself, and that's pick up the phone and call the company, which I will do because I have a couple of questions. So I just don't think we need to formalize it, have a deadline. The 21st is when we meet, have the, the 19th or whatever, that we have to get our comments and suggestions and our whys, if that's what we want to put forward.
Thank you, Chair Jordan.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going to speak again. So, yes, we, we don't even have to do the rubric because we've already kind of, we're bringing this one to the board. But I, I would, I would say, like, like I said before, I know that I did, and I'm sure others have already contacted people and had multiple conversations regarding, you know, information about each and every one of these candidates, or firms, excuse me. So I, I think that if there's new, after hearing them speak to us, if there's more questions that we now have in our mind that we need to have answered, like you just said, Ms. Gittens, let's pick up the phone. We have the phone numbers for Hillsborough. We don't have the phone numbers for some of these, but obviously, if it's Marion County, we, we know how to find these places. All of these in Florida, that the list that they had given us, we have the ability to find those resources. And actually, when you call there and you talk to the office, they are more than happy to give you as much information as you want. So we have that ability to do that, and I agree, let's just do it ourselves.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing direction that the board will look up the information themselves, and if information is shared with me or Attorney DePree Bruno before the meeting, we could certainly make sure that's shared with everyone. Attorney DePree Bruno, did you have a comment?
On this, no.
Ms. Fisher?
So, okay, so we have Ray and Associates, and some of us have made calls to some of their districts that they've done searches for. My experience with a couple of them was, if they were several years ago, like 2015 and 14, there were, people didn't have that information, and there were different people in the board office, and even different office staff and HR staff. So, you know, everyone's in the throes of change like we are. And I just want to ascertain, if we're going to make these calls ourselves, that we would call those that dealt with Ray and Associates most recently, and also that we're not all seven of us calling the same people over and over again, that we should have an assignment, you know? Who will call Marion? Who will call Lake? Who will call Hillsborough? Because I, I think it would be a little counterproductive if, if they got four, or five, or six calls from this board regarding the same firm. That's my comment.
Mrs. Gittens?
I, I disagree with that because I may not ask what you ask. And if I need to make that decision, and when I mark my yes or raise my hand, it's up to me to feel comfortable with that vote. And therefore, I feel confident that, you know, it's a, it's a search firm. They're aware that people are going to ask questions. So we don't know if everyone is going to call, and even if they are, it's a professional firm. So I, I don't want to be assigned that I call this one and you call that one. I really don't.
Thank you. Chair Jordan, and then I'll see if Ms. Patrica or Ms. Giavanelle have any comments.
Thank you. Just, just real quick. In my conversations with multiple people, they did not care, and they cherished the fact that anybody could call them and be more than happy to, to speak to them. So they were very kind and cordial regarding that. They were happy to be able to speak on it. Yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Giavanelle, any additional comments regarding reference checks?
Not possible.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Patrica? Any additional comments?
No, I hear.
Okay. So it seems there's, there's direction that each of the board members will take it upon themselves to call the references for Ray and Associates. The only other question that came back, based on feedback before today's presentation, was coordination of costs. You heard the cost today from Ray and Associates. Is there any direction or discussion, any further direction or discussion, how you want to get additional information on their cost beyond what they shared today? Not seeing any comments. Okay, Chair Jordan?
I was just going to say, I think they explained that thoroughly for us. I believe that they did.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Vaughn, and then Attorney DePree Bruno?
Well, based on some of the additional costs that I know we're going, we're, we're going to at least very seriously consider, I think we should hone in on that, and the smart thing to do would be to develop a budget. In other words, we know that the base cost is $26,000. Are we willing to expand, you know, get more information? Because it, it did sound like, let's say we have three final candidates, and we were told that they schedule all the forums, and these are the times that they actually have somebody here, so that we would incur travel costs and, and that sort of thing. And so we're going to need to, at some point, gather more information, how much, you know, kind of get an estimate of costs, and then come up with a budget. We're not just going to expend, you know, whatever, just keep spending. We should have a budget.
And Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have a comment? And also, maybe I would comment based on the agreement that's put in place?
Well, this is what I was going to ask, this board directive to instruct me to get the contract, start reviewing it, so I have enough time to provide it to the board for you to review it within a reasonable timeframe, and get your comments back.
Can we take a consensus on that, please?
Can we, can we do that prior to the action meeting?
No, this is just, you're not voting on the contract. This is for me to start looking at the terms of the contract, reviewing it, discussing it, sending it to you to review it. And then, if you choose to move forward with this firm, at least that part is done, and you guys would have had ample opportunity to review the terms.
Is your agreement in having Attorney DePree Bruno move forward on that? Consensus from the board? Or direction from the board? Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Giavanelle?
Yes.
Patrica?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Chair Jordan?
I know, I'm sorry, I got all these questions now. This, based on the, so the contract is based on the estimated cost sheet that they sent with the quarterly payments, and then everything up, $30,000, which he said was going to be the maximum. And then the other would be the $2,000 for, like, other expenses coming. Okay.
Yes. I'll look at, I'll look at all of the stuff that they have and move from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair Vaughn, there's no additional comments on my end. Thank you all for, oh, Mrs. Gittens?
I just want to make sure, because I'm, that puts things on the website, to have a quick discussion to say, what do you want on the webpage? Because do we make a statement that this is whom we have decided upon based on consensus and discussion at this meeting? And then the final decision and vote will happen on the 21st?
I think you need to be very careful with that. So I would wait until the board makes its absolute final decision and has the formal action vote before you announce who you will be using as your national search firm.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying, at this point, we have one person, and this is going to be out there on YouTube at the end of this meeting. Am I correct? This meeting will be publicized.
On your channel, that is correct, I believe.
All of the proceedings that we did here today will be public once they hit send. So it would just be confirming what we did today. Okay, so then in that case, you're saying, don't put anything out there, and just tell them to just go watch the meeting.
The board is still under the process of reviewing and analyzing whether or not it wants to move forward with the search firm. The board said...
But that's the comment. It's not a comment of saying, "We've chosen Ray and Associates." The, the statement would be that there was discussion and all of that today in the interviews, and they are, that we are in the process of finalizing it on the 21st.
I still, my red flags are up with regards to that. I don't think that it would be in the board's best interest to actually make that announcement. The public is not going to necessarily understand the nuances of what's on that website. If that firm is up there, they're going to assume that it's that firm. You can link the, the YouTube if you want to.
Well, that's what I said. I'm not going to tell them, "We've selected this group." But to say, to know what's going on, they're going to see it when they pull up the website as well.
The board is making progress. The board is making progress towards the selection, and here's the YouTube link if they want to see it. But I will be very, very careful with that.
Well, for all practical purposes, we've taken a consensus that it is, though.
I know, but that's not a formal action vote. And I don't want to create a property interest for them, that they think that they've been selected in case something happens, and vice versa, with the public's expectation that this is the firm. I think we need to move cautiously because it's not finalized.
Okay. May I ask that you write a statement that will be acceptable and legal, that we can just put on the website, and then refer them to this meeting on YouTube?
If that's, if that's the board's...
If any, everyone agrees. So the question is, can Attorney DePree Bruno write a statement that will go on the webpage, where people are going to be looking to see what, where we're at and what has happened? And at the end of it, it will, and you can give it to me, I'll make sure that it gets up, and just at the end say, refer to this meeting on YouTube and get the rest of your answers. Can we ask for a consensus on that?
Right, so asking consensus for Attorney DePree Bruno? Are you asking consensus for Attorney DePree Bruno to put something in writing for the board to review before it goes on the website?
Chair Jordan?
Yes, thank you. So, for the important dates, so we did not take, we gave directions, we did not take a consensus, correct, on this? We gave direction.
No, we took-
And took consensus on you going, starting to work the contract. But we did not do consensus as far as the-
Ray and Associates?
Correct.
Well, you took a consensus not to add anyone to the list?
Correct.
And by virtue of not adding anyone to the list and having FSBA withdraw, you only have one. So, that is Ray and Associates.
Okay. Because I know that he had said direction. So, we went from direction to consensus. That's what, I want to make sure that, that right terminology, is it direction or is it consensus? So, and then going on here on the important dates, so that would be July, whatever that date is, and I'm just like not with it today. So, I have to apologize to everybody. That we could put on there what that meeting would be about, like Ms. Gittens said, so that we were keeping that up to date on what we will be doing on that date. I just want to clarify what exactly that was.
And may I speak-
Ms. Gittens?
And what I'm asking Attorney DePree Bruno to do is to write the verbiage and then we will make sure it gets up.
I mean, it's going to be very simple. The board is making progress and here's the link.
Thank you. Any concern with the board with Attorney DePree Bruno moving forward with that? Hearing none. Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Vice Chair, that ends my comments as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question to, I guess, just to ask the board. One of the things that I'm concerned about is the comment that was made by a couple of the members of the public about things not being posted on our website. And it wasn't having to do with the specialized, it had to do with the board meetings. And, you know, I'm just, I was just using my phone to take a look. And, okay, when I looked at this, one of the things that pops up are the icons that say, "Board Meetings." And you tap it and it goes right to Board Docs. So, I don't know. Have you, I'm curious if any of the rest of you think that there's an issue in general? We're not talking about the superintendent search, our special page, but in general, not finding things on the website. Ms. Morgan and then Ms. Gittens?
I'm not going to comment about things not being on the website. But I did bring up the question, I'm going to say it was probably almost two months ago, about whether or not we could push out agendas to members of the public who register as being interested in board meetings. So, you know, the date and time of the board meeting and the agenda. When it's published for us, it's pushed out. Now, I don't know if staff has made any progress on that, but I think that would solve certainly some of the problems of people who feel that they're invested in the district, but they're not up to date on what's going on.
Is that on a, is that on our parking lot list?
I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan? Would that be-
Or was it?
Would that be for, how, I remember you saying it, I'll have to go back and look, but what was, how was that to be disseminated?
So, it's just the same way we have, at one point, I think maybe during the sales tax, we had a list of everybody in the community who was interested in information. So, every time we posted information, it went out. So, this would be the same thing. It's a list of people in the community who are interested in receiving information about board meetings. And every time something is posted, for our use, it's also distributed via email or text or however, to members of the public who are interested in receiving it. I know, I believe other districts may be doing it. I'm not certain, but I know that organizations are able to do it because I was asked by an organization that does that if we were able to do it, so.
So, is it on the parking lot?
So, is it, yeah, so is it like where the school, how they send, the district sends out a text saying, "Check your emails," or like for the whole entire community, they'll tell us to check our emails, there's something important? And then, we go to the website and we check that?
No.
This is just the whole list? I'll get with them. And yes, I'll put it on there.
Ms. Stillwell knows what I'm talking about. She's the one who I believe will be working on it for staff. I could be wrong, but-
I got it. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Sorry, Ms. Gittens.
Okay. What I'm trying to say about the webpage is this. When you go to our site, you have to go one, two, three, three to four steps to get where you want to get to. The point you go to, and if everybody just pulls up the website, you go to Leadership, dropdown goes to School Board, dropdown goes to, and you have to find Superintendent Search, which is near the bottom. Then, you click on that. And when you click on it, it doesn't go directly to it. You have to wait until it pops up on the right side. Okay. Then, when you get to that, we do have on the calendar, the date, and it says whether it's public comment or not. And if you click on it, it takes you directly to Board Docs. So, all of that happens. Then, the process, you can also click on YouTube. The problem is, it's too many steps. Something this magnitude and of this importance should have, and I know it pops up on the side periodically, but we need to have it somewhere on that first page that people can just click on Superintendent Search and have it up there. You go from here to here to here, down to here, you click and then you wait to open it. So, my point is, you know, no offense on the website, it's too many steps. And if you're on your phone, it's even harder to do that. So, all I'm asking is that we have a banner. We discussed that way back when, of having a banner with Superintendent Search that is prominently on that page. When you click on LeeSchools.net, you click on it and the information is right there. That's all I'm asking. There's too many steps. And my understanding, what they were saying today, is that it is not easy to get to. So, that's what I think that we should do, especially since there's so many questions about what we are doing. It's all right there, but you have to look for it. And I'm thinking, we make it easier for the public, click on the website and click on the page and there it is.
Okay. Yeah. My initial question, we come back to that, was just in general about the meetings, which brought up Ms. Morgan's comments. And I don't see where the meetings is a problem. I don't often use a desktop for this, but I was leaning over and I see the same icons as on my phone. There's the icon that says, "Board Meetings." It's like a little person and a couple other people. And for board meetings, and I'll just say that for anybody who happens to be listening, it's one click.
But that takes-
No. Because I'm, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Gittens, but that's a slightly different conversation, but an important conversation. But in terms of getting to the meetings and finding the agendas on the meeting, once you get to the website, it's one click. So, I'm not sure what the members of the-
There's two. If you click on Leadership, then School Board, then, I know, I'm looking at it.
Look at the icons.
You either have Board Meeting Calendar, or you have Board Docs, or you have Superintendent Search. There are three possible ways to get information that will give you information about the search. All I'm saying is keeping it simple. And just have, you click on the main page and you click on Superintendent Search and it takes you right there. On that page, it takes you to either Board Docs or YouTube or whatever. So, it's difficult to find.
No, no. And I totally agree with you. It's an important conversation, but it wasn't the conversation I started with, which is the comment by some people that they can't even find the meetings. Not about the Superintendent Search, but just in general about the meetings, which brought up Ms. Morgan's. And what I'm saying is, I don't understand how they don't find the meetings when both on my phone and on the first page of the website, there's an icon and you just, and I know, it's kind of a pain to go through the leadership and all of that. Do we not have that, what is it called? The banner or the, doesn't that go across the screen anymore?
It shows up periodically. On the right-hand side, different things pop up on the right. But if you click on there looking for something, you either have to wait for it to come up or you click through.
Okay.
So, all I'm saying is, for this time, for this importance, for this matter, to have a banner on the top of the page somewhere, the whole thing with the meetings and all that is another conversation. And people have said it's difficult to find things, so.
Right, right. No, I understand that. So, now, on this board comment about what you would, what you would like to do to make it easier to find Superintendent Search page specifically. A permanent, you're saying a permanent banner, one that doesn't, not the, Ms. Stillwell, can you, can you help us?
You know what? For the sake of time, can I get with Ms. Stillwell and her department and just we-
I'd kind of like to hear what she has to say.
We have the banner up there and then we're scrolling through other things because there's other important stuff we have to get out there. But one of the things that Rama and I were just talking about was putting an icon down below where you have Board Meetings, where we could create an icon under there that would say Superintendent Search, so you have it in multiple places.
On the main page?
On the main page with the other icons.
That's all I'm asking.
Yep.
Can we do that, then?
Totally do that.
Everybody on the board, thumbs up if you agree that we should, all right, thumbs up.
Good deal.
Perfect.
Okay.
Ms. Givenelli? Okay. Well, it takes us to good of the order and board member comments. How about the phone people first? Ms. Givenelli, do you have a comment or?
It's good of the order.
Or?
I respect.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just a little disappointed in that we didn't really listen to the community and allow for opportunity for all and be the example that we should have been. But I guess, the will of the board, I just, I'm shocked that we've got, we really, it was by default that someone is going to be our search committee, so. Our search firm, I'm sorry. But anyway, I will go to the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
The only thing I have to say is that when we started this process, there was an urge urging to, you know, get started on the process. And board members stated that we needed to take our time and do it the right way. And it seems like there has been a shift in that to suddenly go faster. I hope we reiterate and go back to what we said initially. We need to take our time. We heard what the company said today and make sure we get the right choice. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Well, I've lost my good of the order comments, so I will try to recall them. I would like to put some things on the, I would like to put some things on the workshop page for us to discuss and prioritize. One is the virtual school. Another is, you know, the status of the virtual school, where we are with that. Another one is the, oh, gosh. Oh, the operations department. I would like to explore the option of moving our meetings that are non-action meetings back to the training rooms because I think we work better when we're in space where we look at one another. And I think we're, we should be able, for the most part, to accommodate the public in that space. I would like to see, from the superintendent, a report on the data that's been collected on the grade three scores aggregated by demographic and by school. And then, I would like to see how we are using the federal money and state money to support the challenges that we see in the data. Oh, folks, I'm sorry. There were a couple of other things. Oh, I know, the other two-
Can you please tell me for, because I'm writing this down? Operations Department?
Yeah, Operations Department. I just want to know who's going to run it and who's, how it's going to be staffed, et cetera.
Okay.
The other two are the fact that we, if we're going to open the Innovation School on August 23, we have to make a decision by, let's say, September, which way we're going. Whether we are going to go with the traditional model or we're going to go with the enhanced model that meets the needs of FGCU. I think what we're going to end up having to do is we're going to end up having to postpone that school until '24 because we're not in a position to make that decision. But we need to have a conversation about whether, which way we want to go. And if we want to go for FGCU, then we need to find out how we're going to come up with the $12 million. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is, we've lost the Mira Lakes property for the East Lee County Technical College. I need to know, you know, what, where we are with respect to backup plans for the, for some sort of site for the East Lee Technical College. And I would like to see the staff plan fleshed out with respect to how we're going to expand the Cape, expand the Technical College, create the wing in the east zone. And nothing is in the budget about the PSA. And the question is, are we going to do it at all? Are we going to ask the partner agencies to fund any renovations to that particular facility? So-
For the Cape?
No. The PSA, Public Service Academy, does not have any funding in the budget. Are we going to fund anything that they're looking for? Or are we looking to our partner agencies to do the funding for the enhancements that they expect to see? So, those are things that I would like to put on the table for workshop, agenda priorities. Those are my good of the order. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And I have no comments at this time. Attorney DePree Bruno?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. So, we've come, what?
Givenelli?
I asked her.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah. We start it with the phone. We start it with the phone people.
Okay.
Thanks. So, seeing no other business, we are adjourned.